All right, we would now like to call to order for tonight. We are delighted to have the opportunity to engage with our public, which is very important to us, in a public hearing for the FY 2022-2023 School Operating Budget. And I would like to call this public hearing to order. And I will now ask if there would be a motion to approve our agenda for tonight, which is inclusive of a presentation around the operating budget by Dr. Edwards and Ms. Davis, and public comments that are restricted only to the budget. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm looking to approve the agenda.
The move by Dr. Carter is second. Second by Dr. Brennan. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, and thank you, Barbara, for being with us tonight. And today is not with us, but our very capable deputy clerk is here. So please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Troost?
Here, yes.
Okay. Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
And Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And the agenda has been approved, and we're going to stand also for our public hearing and sharing the Pledge of Allegiance as we continue to respect our country.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have Dr. Edwards and Ms. Davis lead us in FY 2022-23 Operating Budget Discussion. Dr. Edwards?
Thank you. This is our second public hearing. The first one we did in the fall was more of an input session where we listened to community residents, families, staff, as we were developing the budget. And tonight is the final budget hearing before we go into our work session where the board will review the budget and possibly adopt the budget. And then next week, we have a joint city schools meeting. So for the purposes of, there may be some folks who have not watched any of our previous meetings, I have an abridged presentation just in case anyone in the audience or anybody watching has not seen any of this. And then we are going to immediately turn it over for public comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Next slide, please. So as I said, this is the shortened version of a presentation that we gave on February 22nd, or February 15th, 2022. That presentation is available on Board Docs for anybody who wants to download the full version, or if you have this version, you can click on the link in the PDF for that. Next slide. Just to keep people up on the budget conversations, we posted this before just to let our community know when the board has engaged in discussions regarding the budget. And you can see we are at the second to the last bullet, which is the work session and the public hearing and a joint city schools meeting next week. Next slide. Real quick, just some demographics for Lynchburg City Schools. If you're looking at our K-12 enrollment, we're about seventy-five, a little over seventy-five-hundred kids with three hundred and thirty-one pre-K students. And I've listed our demographics with regard to economically disadvantaged students with disabilities and English language learners. Next slide. Sort of a breakdown of the comparison of our school demographics, the children who are in our buildings, and our city demographics based on the census data that's posted on the city website. And you can see there's a little bit of marketable differences between the children in our buildings and the demographics of our city, which is very important as we determine what services are needed for our kids moving forward. Next slide. Just a couple feel-good photos of our kids and our staff just making it happen during the last two school years while we were in this pandemic. And again, our focus on excellent academics, athletics, extracurricular activities, arts, education, and just doing some really wonderful things to continue the every child by name, by need to graduation, and we like to say, and beyond, because just getting to graduation is not good enough for Lynchburg City School students. Okay, next slide. All right, just a quick summary of what's in the proposed budget. And again, you can get the actual FY 23 proposed budget on Board Docs. You can see the breakdown of all those numbers, and Ms. Davis is going to go over that a little bit later. You can also see a description of the budget requests that were prioritized. We had about a hundred and fifty-one major requests from schools and departments, which we prioritized to get to this point. But just for conversation and quick summary, what's proposed in our budget in early childhood education are an additional pre-K four-year-old class and an additional pre-K three-year-old class. Those come with a teacher assistant as well as the resources. We added one this year. We had a waiting list. We have fourteen students in the class, and we had how many, about how many who were waiting for pre-K three?
Oh, over three hundred.
Yeah, over three hundred. So there is a need in this community for high-quality preschool, and we want to make sure that at Lynchburg City Schools, we continue to offer that as well as partner with Lin CAG, partner with Head Start, partner with Smart Beginnings and other preschool providers in our community, because you guys know, as research says, early start is really important to invest in our kids. Next slide. At the elementary level, one of the things that has changed over this year is testing. We are moving from having a spring SOL test once a year to actually having a SOL test in the fall, an SOL test mid-year, and an SOL test in the spring. And in our elementary buildings, we don't have a testing coordinator like we do in our secondary buildings. It has been our library media specialists who have served as the testing coordinator. And in that capacity, they've closed down the library whenever we've had to test, which is usually, like I said, in the spring. But now with that being three times a year that we're going to do that, we really are looking at having a little bit more assistance to keep our libraries open. A lot of instruction happens in our libraries. They support our literacy in our reading programs. Our librarians and media specialists are absolutely essential to the success of our kids in achieving their reading goals, and we want to continue to have them be able to do that. Some other things at the elementary level, you all know we have a gifted opportunities program at RS Payne for grades three through five, but we also offer gifted services in each of our schools. And to the degree that the building principals are looking at the number of proposed students who are eligible for gifted services, and our instructional coaches who serve double duty as coaching and mentoring new staff as well as providing gifted services for students in the building, we are proposing an additional gifted teacher at the elementary level. Along those same lines, you'll see there's an English Language Learner, ELL, assistant, because the numbers at Sheffield are a little higher there, and we need some support there, as well as supporting the resources and materials for our balanced literacy program, which Deputy Superintendent Pugh has talked about a couple times during these meetings. Next slide. Middle school, middle school math and reading. We have done two updates on our test scores, and you would note that in middle school is an area where we do need a little more attention, a little bit more focus on math and reading. So you will see there's a middle school specialist as well as a math interventionist purely for that grade level to work with staff students at the middle school level. And in addition, an additional school counselor at Dunbar Middle School to also assist with counseling services. In addition, counselors also do threat assessments, and they act as the interventionists when it comes to bullying, social emotional learning, and a host of things in addition to academic career prep. So there is a request for that. Next slide. At the high schools, mostly programming for our students, last year, this school board approved six additional seats at the Gov. School. Those seats have been filled with juniors who are going to be seniors next year, and that leaves open six additional seats for the upcoming juniors to fill. So that was sort of inherent in last year's budget. We made sure to roll it over so that we didn't forget about it this year. Twenty seats for the four credit courses at the regional CTE Academy. So this will allow our students to partake in courses that are not offered at Heritage or EC Glass, but will give them the opportunity to participate in things such as welding. Ten seats for the University of Lynchburg's dual enrollment program in education. Again, trying to provide as much access and opportunity for our students to explore their own passions, whether that's a passion at the Gov. School, STEM Academy, CTE, or in education. An additional ISAP teacher, which is a teacher that supports students who are in the GED program. Every student by name, by need, if the need is at this point, I want to get my GED, and I don't want to drop out. Lynchburg City Schools wraps around those kids, too, and makes sure that we support them in their efforts to get their GED. And then two positions which are much needed during the summertime, two weeks at the end of the school year, two weeks prior, are our school counselors and our special education chair. A lot of services continue during the summer, and to have those folks available for our families to have access to them would be a plus. Next slide. Some community and general requests. Partners in Ed is a wonderful partnership that we have with our local businesses. We are currently, that is currently being supported by the Department of Equity and Community Relations. This would be a part-time position solely for Partners in Ed to continue building and continue supporting our local businesses because they are a viable part to the success of our program. An additional special education supervisor, there are currently two supervisors for special education that serve the entire school division, plus any out-of-district placements that we have both in Lynchburg City Schools, in Lynchburg City, I should say, and outside of Lynchburg City. So there is a need for that. We put in this year a restorative justice practices coordinator. And what that position is meant to do is to work with students in helping to get to the root of conflict and really getting children to understand the balance between the harm that they may cause, whether that's with bullying or physical fights that we may have, taking accountability for that, making amends for it, and promoting and restoring healing. So the restorative justice, if you're not familiar with that concept, it's an intensive student base, it might be family-based, it may be the staff working together. It may be as simple as just a thirty-minute meeting and we're great, or it may be intensive as a couple of months needed for children to really work together to understand and take responsibility. The key to restorative justice, restorative practices, is in restore. We want our children to understand the harm that they cause, and that takes a lot of understanding empathy and being able to put yourself in the other person's shoes for whatever, whatever the affale, I'll say, was done, whether that's a simple, not simple because cyberbullying is very, very harmful, but if it's a cyberbullying and you post something and you don't recognize how harmful that is for the person, the restorative justice's practices can help us work with students. And then the ultimate end game, after there's accountability, after there's understanding, after there's amends, after there is restoration, is to refrain from using those behaviors, right? We don't want kids to continue choosing those behaviors. So that's in our budget for next year, as well as a couple other support positions, network engineer. We have increased the number of devices that we've given to children, as well as devices in the classroom to project and using Zoom as part of our meetings. A grant specialist to help us keep track of all of the grants that we have, and we have many more with the federal grants, CARES funding, and then an additional social worker. Next slide. Some things we'd like to do for staff, because if it wasn't for the excellent service that staff give our children, we would not be in business. So taking a moment just to appreciate staff and also from the lens of recruiting and marketing, making Lynchburg City Schools the employer of choice, as my HR department will say. So just some small perks. Last year, we started to wish in assistance for all staff, not just teachers who want to be an administrator, but for all staff who may have an interest in growing and developing their skill set. A couple things that we can help them save money with, background checks, recertification fees, simple things that staff asked us to consider, like increasing the bereavement days, which would afford them time to travel and also spend time with loved ones, and increase payout for sick time. We have a veteran staff that is truly, truly dedicated to our students. They show up every day. And even during the pandemic, they were here. So looking at some of the retirement benefits as they, particularly some of our baby boomers as they become of age for retirement. And then increasing subpay for all of our substitute positions, teachers, nurses, bus drivers, secretaries, and custodians. That is in this 2023 budget as well. Next slide. Lastly, to the big part of staff support, we are still operating off of the governor's proposed budget from December 2021. You all know that both the House and the Senate have proposed budgets, and we probably won't get any solid direction from that until early April. So the governor's budget is sort of the midpoint budget, with the Senate budget revenues being a little higher, the House budget being a little lower. So we are still sticking with, right now, for purposes of proposing a budget, the governor's budget. And should there be changes, we'll be ready to make those changes. But one of the biggest things is increasing the staff compensation by five percent this year and five percent next year. And I have to pause for that, because over the last couple years, it's been a five percent or a three percent over the biennium, which you could spread over two years. This is five and five, which is really, you know, five and five compounded on top of five is five-point-two-five next year. So it is a two-year investment in staff. This is the first year that we're looking to meet that five percent. Some of my county superintendents are looking at six, six and a half, seven, you may even have heard as high as fourteen percent increases. But at this, based on the governor's budget right now, we put in a five percent. The board did have discussion about an eight percent, so I just want to make sure that people understand that. We differentiated it a little so that our, the positions that are the lower wage positions would see a higher increase than those positions that are at the higher wage. And just following along, trying to get to the proposed legislature of legislation of having of having fifteen dollars an hour in a couple of years, we are stepping up our game each year. Currently, our lowest hourly rate is about eleven sixty-seven an hour, and that is in the current year. Living wage for Lynchburg City, if you go on MIT, that is the source that we use, there's a Lynchburg City, then there's a Lynchburg under the county, they're two different rates. The higher rate is under the Lynchburg City, that's fourteen oh-three an hour. And we currently have about two hundred and twenty-nine employees who are making under that amount, with an average of about thirteen oh-five an hour and a median of thirteen oh-eight an hour. So we do have some employees that are under living wage, but we're committed to continue to raise that every year. We started that two years ago and want to do due diligence. The five percent raise would push us over for most employees. We would have to do another look-see just to make sure that our existing employees would be over. And then also, some funds in there to account for compression. We did not account for compression the last time that we did an increase when we adjusted for living wage. So we do want to make sure that we account for compression with that. There were some questions regarding our salaries and comparing, in one of my last slides, comparing it to a national average, or even comparing it to Northern Virginia. And we did all that, right? We know that Northern Virginia and national average is higher in the sixties, and we're in the forties. But we also compared it to local areas. We compared our starting salaries, our five-year teacher experience salaries to Campbell and Bedford and Amherst and Appomattox and Rowanoke County and Rowanoke City. And in all those cases, if you just look at a teacher with five years' experience coming in, we are under all of those counties. And if we use Nelson County as being, one, close enough that our staff may be interested in traveling, two, we are significantly under them. As they increase their salaries, if they do five percent, we are already anywhere from three to four to seven percent under, under those counties. So as they increase their salaries, in order for us to preserve the gap, we have to at least do what they do. If we want to do anything to reduce the gap, we're going to have to do more. And our staff is absolutely worth it. So I just wanted to share a little bit more data on that. Next slide. And lastly, when we first started this budget process, there was one area that was on our revenue side from the state, and that was in the Career Tech Voc. Ed area. And I think I had mentioned it, it looked like it had went down significantly from, you know, four hundred thousand, about four hundred thousand dollars from last year. It was a mistake and an error that we made on our side in terms of how the minutes were reported. We have since corrected that error, worked with VDOE. We are grateful for them working with us. And that additional revenue has been returned to Lynchburg City Schools. So you may have heard me say several times, to get a five percent salary increase to fund all of our priority zeros and priority ones, we would be asking city council to support us at the tune of over-level funding of three point one million. That has come down, the ask has come down because the revenue has gone up, for those of you who have wanted to know where that came from. Lastly, in terms of what has happened over the last couple of years, since I've been here, we've been level funded or lower. We've been cut a couple of times, and we've made it work. And just to show you that, what we've made it work, in FY twenty, FY eighteen, sorry, staff saw a two percent increase. FY nineteen, that was a rough year, but we gave the five hundred dollar bonus. FY twenty, we saw a three point six seven percent increase. In FY twenty-one, all staff moved up a step, plus we had a thousand dollar bonus. And in FY twenty-two, we moved up a step and we added a three percent cost of living adjustment increase. And that's just been over the last four years with level or lower funding. And that's a result of this staff really working hard, tighten the belt, look for everything everywhere. That method is not sustainable. We're not going to be able to continue to do that over years, which is one of the reasons why we are at an ask for city council and asking their help. Although our total needed is about seven point five million, we're asking for their assistance in the form of two point six, low over two, two point six million. Next slide. Shameless plug, we're hiring. So we are having a career fair on March twenty-sixth at Heritage High School and another one on April thirtieth, and that is for all positions. So if anyone is interested in joining the Lynchburg City team, please, please, please come out and join us at our career fair. And next slide, I think that is it. There is one thing that I would like Ms. Davis to address in full transparency. What we've been trying to share with school board and with our community is using the same forms that you see in city council budget when we report our budget, so that you can see there's a level of transparency, what they're reporting is what we're reporting. And oftentimes, that gets adjusted when we have some changes. Either we'll have fund balance that rolls over into the current year, or we'll have a purchase. I remember one year, we were purchasing school buses, but they didn't come in in June, so the purchase order rolled over into the current year. So on the existing budget, and I know school board members asked this question, why does it say that there's an amended current year budget? And it may look like y'all are really getting level funding, you're getting a little bit more than level funding. Level is about thirty-nine million for us. So I did want Ms. Davis to take a moment, just so that the school board, community can understand what that difference in the, what it looks like, but what it actually is, where it says agency amended FY twenty-two.
So we requested in twenty-two, the thirty-nine eight two eight four ninety-eight. That's what's in our budget book, that's what you all approved. At the end of the year, last fiscal year, we requested to roll some purchase orders that we had not received on yet, about one point eight million dollars. So that has been amended to our current year's budget. So the forty-one six sixty-seven two oh-one is that thirty-nine point eight plus the one point eight POs from the previous year.
So in other words, what it is, to really balance it out, we'd have to reduce last year's budget by that amount if we're going to increase this year's budget by the amount that rolled over. And for our community, just so that you know, when it comes to purchase services, we actually want the equipment, the supplies in hand before we pay the dollar amount. So if they haven't arrived in Lynchburg City, or the services have not been delivered, if it's a professional development workshop or something like that, before the close of the fiscal year, we do hold those POs and roll them over until we receive those services. And I think that was it. Was there any other question that we needed to address? I think that was the big one for the change in budget.
Not unless they have one.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and thank you so much, Ms. Davis, for your sharing. The opportunity to share that information was very important, and equally as important is for this school board to hear the comments from the public around the school operating budget proposal for twenty-two twenty-three. As we move into our public comment section, section D, allow me, as chair, simply to state two or three very important dynamics. Tonight, public comments will be restricted to the twenty-two twenty-three budget only. And so there will be no conversation that is not in specific regards to that. This board in our work session will be looking at our policy, BDDHZ, which addresses public partition, participation at school board meetings. And I do want it to be clear tonight that the usual statement that I read is couched within our policy, and so allow me to read that. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures. Allow me to just be very clear on that. During family time for the Federal Communication Commission, it is very important that this board literally references one dynamic in a classroom, it may be addressed, but for a form such as this, the chair will gavel any vulgar language or gestures. I'm just making that clear upfront. You cannot make comments about a public official or any employee that are not related to their official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. And so there can only be one speaker per group, and we will monitor that as well, having the five minutes. The representatives shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments tonight will be thirty minutes, and public comments are reserved for the public to provide input, and the board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. And I'm thankful for our board also making it clear that upon recognition by the chair tonight, the speaker should also clearly state your name, address, and the subject of your remarks. All right? With that being clear, we have three speakers tonight, and the first speaker that will come before us is Mr. Andrew Glover, who is going to discuss with us the budget from conservative parents of Lynchburg.
So Andrew Glover, fifteen oh-four, Lockwood Drive. Is that it?
That is correct, sir. You can continue.
So I wasn't actually planning to be here tonight. I had, in fact, told my wife on Sunday, when we were planning our week out, that tonight's public hearing had nothing to do with the public, and it was being held because you're legally required to. It's a fact reinforced by the fact that you are, in less than an hour, going to be voting on this budget, regardless of what anyone in this room has to say. Nonetheless, I'm here. I'm here because yesterday I was doing my due diligence to see where the budget numbers finally landed. When I looked, my jaw hit the floor. So where is that floor, may I, you ask? Well, on a per pupil spending basis, that floor is twenty-one thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars per pupil. This twenty-two twenty-three budget has an overall increase of thirty-one point three million dollars over last year's budget, which last year, it was the single largest increase in annual spending in history as well, which is only, which was ten million dollars last year. In fact, many of the school board members here tonight have been on the school board for at least six years, most of you. In the last six years, the annual budget has gone from a hundred and seven million to a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars during your time, a literal fifty percent increase during your tenure here. Do you know what hasn't happened during six years? Student growth. In fact, the number of students enrolled at city schools has dropped ten percent, from eight thousand one hundred and seventy-one to your projections for next year of seven thousand three hundred and eighty-two. Now, forty percent of Lynchburg City students find it worth the additional cost above and beyond taxes to get in educational elsewhere. So very clearly, throwing money at this administration is not satisfying the city's needs. So then what is wrong with this budget? So let's do a simple math problem. The absolute best teachers in Lynchburg City is getting in the neighborhood of sixty-five thousand dollars. That's your best ones, been here for a while. Add in thirty percent benefits, and you're all in cost for these great teachers, eighty-five thousand. When you're at twenty-one thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars per student, that means you only need four students to cover that best teacher's cost. Yet, we are not at a one to four teacher-student ratio. Most classes have twenty-plus students. Everything else over that one to four ratio is just administrative overhead. Some of that administrative overhead is certainly necessary, a lot of it is not. Unfortunately, this budget doesn't do a great job of showing how the school is actually spending the money. The entire budget that you publish for review is only eighteen pages long. That's over eight million dollars a page. Now, compare that with the city, who released a five hundred and ninety-page detailed budget, or about a million dollars a page, meaning you've provided only a tenth of the clarity that the city is providing. So for instance, operating revenue is at one hundred and eight million dollars this year, up from a hundred million last year, and grants are at fifty million dollars, up from twenty-six million dollars last year. Yet, nowhere in this budget addresses how that grant money is being spent, only that you are receiving it from a variety of federal and state programs. In fact, almost all the pages on your budget have a little footnote indicating grant funds not included. Fifty million dollars is a lot of money to not know where you're spending it. What's more is this grant money will come with additional strings and ongoing costs. This is particularly, this particularly was not addressed in your budget or any of your discussions. Yet, a quick perusal through the budget request worksheet, I can identify over four hundred thousand dollars in yearly ongoing costs related to all the use of this one-time grant funding. And the last time I recall you discussing the CARES grants, last year, you were planning to hire twenty brand-new FTEs paid for by those grants. What happens to all those FTEs, FTEs when these grants are no longer available? This is why, at the beginning of the budget season, I stood here and asked you to particularly address your sunsetting plans, which you have not, which you have not only failed to do, you've actually made the issue worse. So to end, I start where I began. I was not intending to come tonight, but I refuse to sit down and be quiet while you spend money that is not yours.
Our next speaker for tonight is Mr. Phil Stump, representing the Virginia Organizing and the Budget. And you likewise would state your name, address, and the subject you're speaking.
Good evening. My name is Phil Stump, thirty-six oh-two Sherwood Place in Lynchburg, and I have with me two other members of Virginia Organizing, Kimberly Dyke and Susie Joyner. And we want to commend the superintendent for the carefully crafted budget and to urge the city government to approve it in full. We particularly commend the superintendent for including in the budget funding for a full-time staff position to implement restorative justice practices in Lynchburg schools, and we strongly urge you to keep this funding at priority one. There is rapidly growing evidence for the effectiveness of restorative justice programs, and I really want to thank Dr. Edwards for explaining so well what restorative justice does, especially in light of the new situations of cyberbullying and other factors that really make it even more important. I want to bring you one example that I think is, is very helpful, from the Oakland Unified School District in California, and actually, my wife and I lived there in Oakland before we moved here in nineteen eighty. And it's a school district that in many ways is similar to our own. In two thousand and six, under strong youth leadership, the Oakland Unified School District launched California's first urban school-based restorative justice pilot at an Oakland middle school. The pilot used restorative conversations in circles proactively to create a culture of connectivity and responsibly provide an alternative to exclusionary discipline. That means suspensions and expulsions. Suspension rates plummeted by eighty-seven percent during the first two years. Violence and teacher attrition were eradicated, and academic outcomes increased. By two thousand and ten, with youth organizing and assistance, the Oakland Unified School District adopted restorative justice as official policy and committed significant staff and financial resources to fund these efforts. Now nearly forty- Now nearly forty Oakland Unified School District restorative schools implement a wide range of restorative practices that both proactively strengthen community and responsibly repair harm. These practices include restorative conversations, conferencing in circles, mediation, and a strong student-led component. Restorative practices are often co-implemented with other school climate strategies, such as positive behavioral intervention systems, which we use in our schools, and initiatives coming out of the Offices of Equity and African-American Male Achievement. From 2012 to 2017, overall suspension rates in Oakland Unified School District dropped by nearly 55% from 7.4% to 3.3%. Moreover, because the restorative practices were adopted in conjunction with training and racial awareness, the black-white discipline gap narrowed from 12.1% to 6.4%. Finally, I would stress again that implementation of this position will actually reduce budget expenditures rather quickly by reducing student suspensions, expulsions, and absenteeism, and by increasing teacher retention and recruitment. We can do this too. Please keep this position in the budget. And I have two colleagues here.
There's no more time left.
They had about a minute and a half left.
They do have a minute and a half left?
Yeah, but there's only one speaker per group.
Then, then we would have to refrain from further comments. I do thank you, Mr. Stump, and the board has heard your concerns.
I asked for individual, was it not changed?
Not on this particular list, but the pleasure of the board, it's not stated here. I have three names here.
Three minutes, okay, thank you. I'm here, Kimberly Dyke-Harsley. Shout out to my Paul Monroe Patriot family. I am here to advocate for increased subpay. Substitute is known as replacement in the place of another. As a building sub, Mrs. K., I built relationship in a consistent manner, four days a week, $80 a day for IA, $90 a day as a teacher. That includes PE teacher, art teacher, et cetera. That's without a bachelor's degree. If it's with a bachelor's degree, then it's 100 a day, I believe. Either way, the pay should increase because consistency is key, and it also keeps the confidence in the students to see the same individual or body there, knowing that, okay, this person will be here implementing similar practices, same classroom rules, knowing the school, knowing the atmosphere, the climate, the parents. I, as a parent, will feel confident with someone there under the direction of great Principal Donna Bear, and knowing all the staff, really. So I told them I would come and speak, and I'm here. Mr. Babers class? Thank you for that, and I would like to advocate for increased subpay. Thanks.
All right, thank you all very much. All right, the last speaker that I have here as we stick to the rules, Gary Taylor, regarding the budget.
Yes, they call your name. How you doing? My name is Gary Taylor Windhurst, and unfortunately, Dr. Edwards has addressed almost everything that I've been talking about for the last few days, and that's teacher salaries and the little situation you had here on your school board over the last month, a month and a half. And, you know, I just wanted to reiterate the importance of having real accurate data instead of what you were originally presented with, with the inaccurate data that Lynchburg teachers made $47,000 a year, and the rest of the state of Virginia made $63,000 a year. That's a 25% gap, as Dr. Brennan was squirming in his chair over there, to how are you guys going to help reduce that gap? Well, it wasn't a gap because the data was garbage. So garbage in is garbage out. You're in a very difficult situation right now. You're coming out of a pandemic after two years. The world's been turned upside down, and the last thing you need is misinformation when you're trying to make decisions that affect the schools. Dr. Edwards was nice enough to provide that information, and she stated the difference in Lynchburg salaries and the true surrounding salaries is 3%, 4% to 7%. Well, that's one quarter of what you originally thought it was. Okay? So that's the important point of it, and I appreciate them doing that. And I think it also gives the board, who you are the ones that have to make the decisions, the opportunity to get apples-to-apples information instead of apples-to-oranges. So that was a very important exercise, and I truly thank the school system for redoing it that way because we started then talking about an 8% thing to try to help out our staff. Well, that number was bogus. I mean, that $2.3 million that that would have added to your ass, the city council, the doctor, I think, Sinha, that sat down with Councilman Hegelson, how you think that was going to go over with him? Go back and bring me some real data. So it's important to have apples-to-apples in anything you do. And again, thank you. I wasn't sure if Dr. Coleman would let me speak today after the Virginia Tech basketball game Saturday. But I thank you, sir. And I just, I want to make just one point about the budget process. Because of the pandemic, you have this whole garbled-up two years that really, from before and after, are going to be an anomaly. So I hope somebody's thinking about how do you address that when you're actually out of this whole pandemic? Is, when you look back on 2022 and 2023, those numbers are not really like a traditional year. So I just, I hope, I hope you would keep that in mind when you're, whoever takes care of your budgeting and your history, that we can't just go in a straight line from '20 to '21 to '22 and '23. There's got to be some compensation and information put in there for all the COVID money.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
That's an important part. And my last thing is I hope you do support the Future of Education Task Force like Dr. Coleman and Dr. Gupta have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir.
All right, that board has concluded the public comments that we have on record for tonight. And we've had the opportunity to, to hear the comments from the public. If there are no other statements to be made by any members of the board, this will conclude our public hearing, and this meeting is adjourned. It is 5:47, and we can break until 6:00. Or if we wanted to come back a little earlier, we can, with the pleasure of the board.
Let's go. No break.
Let's take a break.
Can we take like a ten, ten-minute break?
Well, that's going to put us right at 5:57.
So 6 o'clock.
So... Hey, I don't make any difference to me. You all need 10 minutes to do, you need 10 minutes?
Well, I think because the posted time of the work session was 6 o'clock, aren't we obligated in some way to stick to that for people wanting to tune in?
If the board chooses, if the board chooses to adjust, we could, but I'm simply asking.
I had thought 5 minutes, but if you all want to wait till 5:47?
I think actually Dr. Sinha probably makes, that's a good point. I mean, we advertised 6 o'clock.
All right, we will reconvene at 6:00.
We will now call to order the March the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board Work Session of the Lynchburg City School Board. And I would now like to entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's work session agenda that has been appropriately featured on board docs as their motion to approve our agenda tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Brennan, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we will approve the agenda for tonight's Board Work Session. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Ms. Tros?
Yes.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Dr. Senna?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
And Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. We once again will stand now and share in our pledge of allegiance for our Board Work Session.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to the Board and to all who are gathered tonight. If you would, I would like to make the following brief statement before we go into Section C of our agenda tonight. As we begin tonight's Board Work Session, please allow me to pause briefly to say that two years ago, in this same month, March the eleventh, two thousand and twenty, the World Health Organization made the assessment that the novel virus COVID- nineteen could be characterized as a pandemic. Since that time, many lives have been directly lost to COVID, to include Dr. Gupta's father, and many other lives, like my father, were severely impacted as my dad's health condition declined due to taking care of my mom, fear of leaving his house, and ultimately not having direct access to his doctor in Richmond. The true stories of our LCS families are too numerous to mention in this regard. I simply want to say that I am proud of this Board, Superintendent, and staff for leading LCS through two of the most trying years in the history of providing public education in Lynchburg, Virginia. I believe history will record favorable remarks about our work. Therefore, as we have rolled up our sleeves to do the hard work the past two years, I strongly believe we can do likewise going forward over the next three and one-half months. We will now pause for a moment of silence in appreciation for all essential workers and in memory of all that have lost family, friends, colleagues, and parents during the pandemic. Thank you, Board and community. Section C, our first item, is our Human Resources Report. Dr. Edwards.
So normally, we don't have any business on our work session unless it's personnel. And I just want to remind the School Board that we are doing due diligence to ask early to find out what staff plans are for the upcoming school year so we can plan early and make sure that if we need to make some adjustments. So you do have an HR report with some nominations and resignations and retirements. I will just briefly point out that one of those resignations is our Principal of Perrymont Elementary School, who is leaving us to join the ranks of the administrative staff of VHSL. So to the degree that he won't be serving Perrymont in July, he'll still be around because we have some championship teams that just are always ever-present in the VHSL world. So he'll be seeing us. So we wish him well in that transition.
So thank you, Dr. Edwards. So there's no need for action tonight?
You do have to take action.
Okay. Board, is there a motion to approve the Human Resource Report, C-one?
A move that we approve the Human Resources Report.
Been moved by Dr. Carter. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Tros, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Dr. Senna.
Just to note that since nationwide, it's recognized that a lot of teachers may be leaving the profession, given the difficulty of the last two years and a lot of other compounding factors. Would it be possible, kind of when it's all said and done, to get a report showing how the number of resignations compares, like a five-year trend line, so that we can see if it's out of the ordinary or if it's on par with sort of our historical average over time?
We just have to be careful because even before the pandemic, there was a prediction due to a lot of the baby boomers retiring that we were going to see a part of a shortage in education.
Yes. And in fact, the year before you joined us, we had an exceptionally high resignation rate. So we are aware that it does fluctuate. But I would like to see that summary. I think it would be very informative and hopefully give some context so that we're not just looking at it in the current year. And maybe it'll be good news. I'm going to be hopeful. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Senna. Any further discussion on this? I do want to acknowledge that I'm on the executive committee of Virginia High School League, and of course, the departure of our principal is due to the fact that he has that amazing opportunity to lead along with Billy Hahn, the Virginia High School League. And so, their gain, our loss. But any further questions, discussion? Yes.
I just wanted to point out that we should acknowledge that the behavior issues in middle and high schools have gone up quite a bit, year after year. So we should admire and, you know, pay respect to teachers who are working in a very difficult environment. And it's almost like, I shouldn't use the word to dramatize, like a war zone sometimes. It requires more people to handle students. So.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Any further reflections? Then we're going to ask for the Deputy Clerk to call to roll in regards to the Human Resource Report.
Ms. Tros?
Yes.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Dr. Senna?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
And Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. We will now move to C-two, which is the Education Task Force. And this is on our agenda for an opportunity to reflect on the Education Task Force. Many of you are aware of the fact that this Board, in two successive Januaries, acted at request from Dr. Gillette in relationship to direction for the Task Force. January of two thousand and twenty-one, it was around modifications to include mental health-type dynamics, broadband issues, et cetera. And we passed that on to council. Secondarily, on January of this year, it was brought back up and we decided at that time to send over to council a support for the Task Force around its original charter. On last Tuesday, March the eighth, Dr. Gillette did report to the council in relationship to the Task Force and his reflections and thoughts about its continuance. At this time, I would like for us to be reminded that there is a six-member steering committee at the inception of the Task Force. At that time, that included Susan Morrison and Atul Gupta from our side, Bo Wright, Randy Nelson from council's side, and Dr. Gillette and Gloria Preston. I would like to yield at this time for Ms. Morrison to just give reflections of the journey as the original steering committee member, as well as Dr. Gupta, concerning the Education Task Force.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And my involvement in this Task Force began before the steering committee even started because as the School Board Chair and the Vice Chair, meeting with city and school leaders along with administration, we had had the Sandusky Elementary School pushed back and the schedule, the building postponed. We are placing, doing the best we could to update, improve our facilities, keep them operational. I felt we were putting Band-Aids on wounds and that instead of continuing to pour money, we really needed to understand the scope and sequence of what was going on with the facilities. So in city-school leadership, we talked about how do we get this done? And it came up, the Heritage High School model, that there was a task force that studied it, came up with a solution. So that was the reason we started the Task Force. And we met Dr. Gupta, I think, for about nine months, and we had lots of discussions. We were to present a report to city council, the School Board and city council, meaning the Task Force. We had not gotten to that point where we had a report to present. Really would like to thank the members of the Task Force for the commitment to the project that started over three years ago. We had an incredible group of people with just a depth of knowledge and insight, and I enjoyed those conversations. We had to take a pause with COVID, and that was initiated from the Chair, that it was not safe for us to meet in a large group, and that we would take a pause. During that pause, the steering committee met along with school administration and city administration and said, we felt that there needed to be a refocus on what the city-school Task Force, that we had pressing issues, that we, the COVID had certainly shown us the need for distance learning, that it certainly showed us the digital divide within our community for our students and our families, and it certainly had projected mental and emotional health issues into the forefront. So we identified that we would focus on those three areas. We didn't get back together as a group or a steering committee. But we, as Lynchburg City Schools, addressed distance learning through the purchase of Chromebooks, hotspot internet cards, and establishment of a virtual academy. We did that. We address and are addressing the digital divide with a broadband plan to increase capability of our students and families to connect to Lynchburg City Schools, to access information that they need, and that's a citywide plan. We have been and will continue to address mental health and behavioral issues that we know are only going to increase, and we did so through our budget requests. We have asked for a number of positions to help us with those needs. During the COVID pandemic, Lynchburg City Schools did not stop doing their job. The staff and the Lynchburg City School Board moved forward addressing the needs of our school community. We have authorized and funded the facility and demographic study. That report should come to this Board. It is information for us, it is recommendations that we need to consider, it is, we cannot pass on the hard decisions. We, as a Board, have to address our responsibilities, but as we do that, we have to make a strong commitment for community involvement, for community input, from community response, from community concerns. Whenever you talk about rezoning, or redistricting, or closing a school, there's going to be a lot of need for community dialogue. And I want to say right now, those discussions and those decisions have not been made and will not be made without community input. I strongly urge the School Board to consider that this is our responsibility and should fall on our shoulders and on the shoulders of our colleagues and city council, and that it is our responsibility and our responsibility alone as governing bodies.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. The Chair will now yield to Dr. Gupta for additional comments as a member of the steering committee.
No, I agree with her. The environment has changed quite a bit since the, we used the word Task Force. Task, it was a steering committee of six people. Then the subcommittees were appointed by that steering committee, and the, within these, those subcommittees, they elevated individuals to be the chairs of those subcommittees. And then we had formed, added more committees as they were needed, but at that time, nobody thought about digital education, nobody thought about mental health issues coming as a result of pandemic. So it's like I'm trained to be an ophthalmologist, and suddenly, the demand has gone up for infectious disease. So I got to go back to the school and get retrained all over again. And that's why, how I look at this Task Force now, is whatever the original purpose was, that the consultants we have, they are doing the demographic study, they are looking at the buildings, you know, all the tasks or the goals we had as a steering committee, I see in Dominion Seven, right? That's the D-seven, that's, when I see their, their task, that's what they are doing.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. I had, as Board Chair, certainly stated to Ms. Morrison that I wanted her to stay on the steering committee, but she indicated that she did not want to continue to do that, and I have stepped in. And I would concur with the two original steering committee members around the Task Force, as I now ponder over our constitutional responsibilities and the dynamics that go along with confidentiality and the role that we have in working with our community to get these important tasks done. And so as Chair tonight, I would like to have the opportunity to go around and hear the thoughts of each Board Member beyond those who have already spoken, or even to include those, as to your thoughts of the continuance of the Task Force from the School Board side, as it is our responsibility to handle that matter. And so what I will do is, we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Harvey to give his comments. I do want to acknowledge tonight that we do not need to spend a long period of time discussing this, as was stated in council meeting. And so the Chair will give, you know, roughly a minute or two, a couple of minutes, to share your thoughts and opinions about this. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like for this first comment I'd like to make not to be counted as part of my time for discussion, but more importantly, I'd like to understand what's going on here. Last time this Board met, we voted unanimously to maintain the charter that, a year before, we voted unanimously to take for the Task Force. So what's this, what's going on right now? I first would like to understand that before I can reply within my time allowance.
And I second that. I mean, I was not around for the initial Task Force development, the goals, objectives, and the other nature. But I second the fact that it seems like, you know, we want the Task Force, we want the Task Force, and all of a sudden, I see a shift, and I'm not sure. So I just want to understand what the dynamic is, because I'm, quite frankly, I'm just taken aback.
And I appreciate that. And I do want to underscore, number one, that we're not going to stay on this for a long time, but I do would expect that each Board Member would be acknowledged by the Chair, so that we can have order during the discussion, and if I have to do otherwise, I certainly will make sure that we maintain order.
I think Ms. Morrison would like to
I think Ms. Morrison would like to speak at this time.
From my point of view, from being in on it from the beginning, a lot of what we asked, assigned to the task force, we have already done. The facilities report has been done, the demographic report has been done. That needs to come to us so that we can continue moving this needle forward, as opposed to going to a committee where recommendations are made, then they come back to us, and we don't even, we haven't had the opportunity. I see that as our responsibility, and one that, three years ago, if we were, had kept, continued then, we would be in a different place now. But it was, we need, I feel strongly that it needs to come back to us.
We'll go with your point of order.
Mr. Tross.
Okay, so let me understand, so Ava, you're saying that we should be, the deliverable of the task force was a report, is that correct?
A report with recommendations.
Okay. And where are we in the task force process at this point?
They've not done it.
Okay. And then what, have they?
Let me not respond, because I'm no longer on the task force, so Dr. Coleman is, and Dr. Gupta.
Yeah, we, there has been no convening of the steering committee or the body since their last meeting, however long ago that was, Mr. Tross. And so tonight, we are bringing this before the board for reflection, and there is some thought about the fact that the nine members of the Lynchburg City School Board have been given the task to move Lynchburg City Schools forward, and there is a thought at this point that we need to take ownership of our responsibility in that regard with community input, which is bringing this back on the table for discussion tonight. And the chair is simply asking for each board member to articulate their thoughts around us assuming responsibility for this task, with so many things that are questionable in relationship to what things could look like, maybe even beyond the scope of what we had originally thought that the task force would be tasked to do. And so, Mr. Harvey, your time does not include your initial statement.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I don't even know how to begin. I am just so frustrated right now, I don't know what to do. I agree with you 100% that this board, the responsibility resides with this board, but for this board to make the decisions that it needs to make, you need the information. This board are not architects, this board is not demographic study and analysis experts. That is one small portion of the responsibilities that this task force has. This task force is also asked to look at talent acquisition. This task force is also looking at financial aspects. This task force is also looking at the future of education, which goes back to the point that was made about the digital, digital learning, remote learning and so forth. So the information that comes from all of these experts has been assembled. For us to just completely disregard this, I would challenge the school board to have the gumption and the intestinal fortitude to actually make the discussions and the decisions that this task force has been charged with tackling and they're trying to do. I am frustrated on so many levels, because unlike what the chair just said, there was a meeting that happened back in January of this year that was select members that had this, this meeting, and I think even council members, I mean, former council member Gillette, Dr. Gillette made that point made at city council meeting. And at that same meeting, our chair, Dr. Coleman, when asked, what did the school board feel, he went up and said, the school board voted unanimously to support the charter of the task force. Why are we having this continued discussion, folks? The task force is necessary. The task force will have a width of, of study that this board needs to get the information to make the hard decisions that we need to make moving forward, not just talking about facilities. I'm gonna make a prediction right now, without looking at the, the facility study. We have old buildings, we have old buildings that need work, but there are other things in LCS that need to be addressed, and this task force needs to be able to do its work, to bring its presentation back to, to this board, and yes, it does rely and reside with this board to make the final decisions. And I apologize for my demeanor here, but this is frustrating for me, because I've been trying to talk with you about this for years and insist that this go through. This was actually asked of me, when I was appointed to come onto this board, it was actually asked of me if I would consider, if I were not appointed to the board, if I would consider serving on this task force. That's how long this has been going on. This is an important issue. Do not scuttlebutt this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Dr. Gupta, do you have any additional comments that you'd like to make?
No, and I'll yield my time, because I've already spoken.
Thank you, Dr. Senha.
Yeah, I have to say, I'm, I'm a little bit frustrated too, and until we see a report and recommendations of the task force that offer us the information we need and the direction we need to go, because ultimately, we're the ones charged with the hard decisions and creating policy, acting on that policy, taking the steps and the measures that have to be done. It's, at one point or another, the task force has been characterized somewhat as a shadow school board, which I find troubling, but I don't know, again, I'm frustrated because it's just rumor and innuendo, and I'm not clear on exactly where they land on some of these, you know, deliverables that were supposed to come, like looking at our financial structure. I do think we need to look at, at all that and such. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little frustrated that they, they didn't meet at all during COVID. I think that was a bit much, and I'm not sure why that was allowed to happen, because time is of the essence, and certainly, I'm glad that we took steps with the CARES funding that we had to do the facility study and keep that moving forward. But I would like to see their recommendations, but ultimately, we're constitutionally charged to, you know, do the decision-making and, and appropriate steps. But again, I'm, I'm not clear on why this is coming up now and what we're supposed to be talking about, so I'm, I'm a little frustrated too, to be honest.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Dr. Nillis.
Yeah, my sense is the task force steering committee has decided to change the scope of the original charter. I mean, we, I voted to support the original charter, we have done a lot of work that I think doesn't need to be done, doesn't need to be replicated by, by, by the steering committee or, or the subcommittees, you know, particularly the demographic study and, you know, that building school conditions, that's, that's, that's a big deal. We have an independent organization that's, that's looking into that, it's gonna provide a report, I believe in, in, in April, and that's something that needs to be considered. Some of the other items for the steering committee, you know, financial, it's like, okay, you know, great, take a look at it. I'm really not quite sure why, looking at financial organization structure, that, that was really impacted by COVID. So I think from, from my standpoint, some of the items that they were supposed to take care of have, are being taken care of by the board. There might be some others that they can follow through on, but I don't believe that they need to be going off and creating a new, a new scope for them, for themselves. I think, you know, we supported, the board supported following through on the original charter. So I, I, I haven't changed my position from that. I think the scope of the charter probably is, is quite a bit less now, based on circumstances and.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis, and I make no apology about bringing this up today. I, again, feel very strongly that the Lynchburg City School Board constitutionally has a task to do, and that we will involve the community, and I'd like to see us lead those internal dynamics, get to the hard issues, and work with our community and council. And so that's where I stand as it relates to tonight, giving the school board its right to do what we are tasked to do. Dr. Carter?
Just thinking about going back and looking at the Constitution of Virginia, Article Education, and also the Virginia Code, Chapter 7, with the general powers and duties of the school board, and specifically identify where the care and management of the property, and also the consolidation of schools or redistricting, and that is for us. And I listened as the, Dr. Michael Gillette talked about, he'll get the study, analyze it, we can do the same thing, that's what we can do. And we will, can be part of the committee that works with the city, and we can appoint members from this board to be on that, to look at this. And what we do need, community input for, as we go further into this, as we talk about what schools we're looking at, or just what it's gonna look like, we do need community input, and also family involvement into that, and not that we're trying to make sure that doesn't happen, we want that to happen, but as for having an education task force that's going to continue to broaden the scope and to look at other things, and we've already done a lot of this already with the facility studies, the demographic study, and I really don't think that we, we appreciate all they've done, and even when the reports came out, they weren't posted, we didn't have that, it was on the Lynchburg City sites that we looked at and found out, but they were never given to us, and I was concerned about that, and also just having to hear this, a lot of the information from, in the city, city council meeting, which should have started at this meeting, and we want to be the face of this change, and also any, that we can trust, that constituents can trust us, come to us, knowing that we have to look at two things, the financial piece of it and also the student piece of it, and how it's gonna impact the students and us, and the, and the finances. And if I'm not out of line, I'm gonna make a, make a, make a motion.
I, I would, I would like to hear what Dr. Brennan and Dr. Tross have not had an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I also am torn by this topic and this conversation and this issue. I think it's been very difficult to sort of get my hands around. I've spoken with members of the task force, city council members, to try to understand what's, you know, what is, what are the issues here. I will go back to when it all started, I thought, I thought it was really a great idea, and actually, I still think the concept is a great idea. I think that the members of the committee were very impressive, including our two members, city council members, community members. I thought this was really a good group to address this. I think the charter itself, which states that the task force shall gather information, engage the public in conversation, conduct thorough analysis, and forward actionable recommendations to the school board, with the goal of aligning future educational programming is what we want to have come out of the task force. I am so sorry and disappointed that COVID came along to affect that. You know, I think that they were really trying to make this happen, and COVID really shut the, the whole process down. And I'm also really sorry that this has become such a controversial topic, and I don't quite understand that. You know, it's become much more divisive than I understand. I've listened to the city council presentation, I listened to Dr. Gillette's presentation. To answer, I think, Mr. Harvey's question, I think one of the reasons we're discussing this is because city council also cannot get their hand around it, cannot decide what to do with the task force, it cannot make a decision. So they have asked, when we meet on the 22nd, that this be on our agenda to discuss that topic. So I think that's part of the reason we're having this conversation, that's what they wanted at their last meeting. I actually think that, that we, that the school system would benefit from community input, like was set up by the task force, I think that'd be very helpful. I think we've made it very clear, and it's been said over and over again, the task force, that the task force was gonna report to this, to Lynchburg City Schools and to the city, and they were gonna make a decision, that the task force was not a deciding body, it was recommendations to the deciding bodies that were gonna do that. So having talked to various people and think about it, I, I really would like the task force to continue, but with a limited agenda, which is primarily the facilities and the demographics, because that's what we're struggling with right now, and I think that's what we need community help with. I think that's the input that we need. I think that if this board decides they don't want to do the task force, then I think Lynchburg City Schools has to step up in a way we've not done before, as Mrs. Morrison was saying, to get community input in a very solid, specific way, with various meetings, various venues, various ways to have input, because we need that. And I don't want us to cut ourselves off from the community by not having the task force. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Mr. Tross.
Thank you, James. I usually stand from the position that more information makes us, gives us the ability to make better decisions. I echo Dr. Brennan's sentiment that I specifically want to involve the community. From my standpoint, it seems like our school system has our hands full, and if the task force is able to be the conduit to get to the community and establish that, that dialogue with the community, I'm all for it. I'd like to see the task force continue, because I think we voted a couple of times to have it continue. And I believe, as Dr. Carter indicated, we have the ultimate decision, and let's see the reports. Even if they are beyond the scope, we have the decision-making power, as I understand it. And I'd just like to see, continue to see the reports and get the data, and we can act on the data that we are given. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tross. Dr. Carter, did you have a motion that you, that you would make?
Well, I would like to move the, the education task force. We want to thank them for the work they've done and relieve them of their duties originally expressed in the charter, and we'll continue to work with the Lynchburg City Council and the Lynchburg City School Boards to move on in, with the endeavor, but we're knowing also that we will be working with the public. But the way that's gonna be configured, we can do that, and we'll do that.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you, to restate the motion one more time and then.
Move that we relieve them of their duties? The education task force.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's been a motion on the floor with a second, that the education task force be thanked for their efforts thus far, and that the group would be relieved of their duties, and that the Lynchburg City School Board alongside of the Lynchburg City Council, with community input, would drive us forward in this matter. Floor is now open for discussion on the motion. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not be supporting this motion. We have an obligation. We have an obligation to assemble information to make the best decisions for Lynchburg City Schools. That includes our students, our staff, and our community. The focus has been diverted to buildings. Our school system is so much more than buildings. Our school system is people. The task force, as it has been assembled, is made up of, I believe, well over 40 professionals, experts in their fields, to gather information and bring that information back to this body to make a decision, to simply say to these people who have already begun their efforts, who volunteered their time, "Thank you, but no thanks." That's an insult. This board should be ashamed if we approve this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Dr. Gupta, did you want to say?
In, in the last two years, nothing has happened on that front. So shame lasts for two years. And as I see the letter from Dr. Gillette, I am part of the steering committee, and I was never involved in writing that letter, never involved. I don't know if Dr. Coleman was.
No. No.
When you represent a body, you represent a body. You don't represent yourself. That's number one. Number two, task force job is not to go out there and do witch hunt on exit interviews. That's beyond their scope. That was not the charter. If you want to change the charter, come back to the governing bodies and ask them to change the charter. You don't go into a public forum asking people that the charter be redefined in one public body, but not the body which approved you, which is the school board. That's number two. Number three is, if, if the steering is going rogue, then it's better to stop and maybe reformulate it once the facility study come back. Nobody's saying that this is dead end. This is not going forward. But based on the facility studies, we'll see what the needs are. And at that time, the school board as the governing body, this is our responsibility. This is not, as the city council was saying, you're punting it between different bodies and it's not going anywhere. So it needs to go in a direction and it needs to go in a direction in a timely fashion, not for months and months and months. When the report comes, the decisions need to be made on, with a timeline in mind. And right now, there was no timeline. The needs of the board, uh, the, the task force have changed. I mean, a lot of these members don't, are not, may not be, were against distance learning in those discussions. And we have moved towards distance learning. But you know, so, uh, as I read that, uh, I was in the city council meeting and the scope, when you start changing the scope unilaterally without consulting the other members and we have the responsibility to report to this board. Every time you have on the agenda, "Do you have anything to report?" And I said, "No, I don't have anything to report." And here you are presenting a letter to the city council as a steering committee. I look like a goofy character because it means I lied to you guys that I had nothing to report, but there was a letter in the making. My ethical responsibility was, as soon as I found out that the letter has been shared with me to give my comments, I should have shared with all of you. But that did not happen. So, um, in terms of apology, uh, I would have apologized. If the letter was shared with me and I failed to share with each one of you to see what you feel, how you feel, where should we be going, is the scope appropriate, that never happened. At least with me, maybe my email was hacked at that time. But nothing was shared with me in my private email or public email.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Gupta. I, I certainly want to acknowledge that as chair, I have demonstrated my ability to separate my emotions from my intellect. I am not operating in any form of emotion as this matter has been brought before this board tonight. I am not seeking to be political. There is no particular group that I am trying to please. I want to do what's right for kids. I'm not interested in being a part of any process that facilitates thoughts and opinions that may be generated with motives that are not necessarily in the best interest of kids. Every person, Mr. Harvey, on those forty-member committee, I know them, have worked with them, from planning commission to this and that, and I'm fond of all of them. The work of dealing with the students of Lynchburg City Schools is resident in the superintendent and the board that employs that superintendent. The scope has expanded itself beyond, in my personal opinion, what is constitutional. And I am not going to abdicate the responsibility that this board has. Every internal mechanism that needs to be put in place will be in place to make sure that this board can review what is going on with internal affairs. Can you imagine having outside entities talking to current personnel? And so I believe that Trenae Tweedy, Councilwoman Trenae Tweedy, is very accurate. We creatively punt it. Education has been weaponized. There are all kinds of agendas that are going on and you all around this table know it. And I'm asking us to have the courage to do what is right for kids and the principles of what a school board is supposed to do according to the Constitution of Virginia. And to take that responsibility, to involve the public in that process in the right way. This has nothing to do with my personal thoughts about Dr. Gillette or any of the members of the task force. I must state that as a member of the steering committee that has passed on both times, I wanted to make sure that when I appeared before the committee last Tuesday, that I was speaking as an individual board member. But I also wanted to make it clear that this board has done everything that we were asked to do in a timely manner. And that we pass that on rather than give the appearance that we were not doing what we needed to do. We've done that from day one. Now that the scope has expanded itself beyond what is necessary, in my personal opinion, we as a board have the responsibility to do that. And it is not an offense to any human being. We will get everybody involved and do what we need to do internally, from my perspective. And so I will never be on this board and allow myself to give in to pressure from external forces. I will always do what I believe is right for kids. And what is right for kids is for this very capable. On this board, we have a lawyer, a doctor, former school administrators, high, uh, higher education administrators, engineers, architect, and a very capable superintendent and staff to carry out the work that we have been challenged to do. Any further statements or dynamics concerning this, uh, Dr. Brennan?
Uh, Dr. Coleman, thanks for your, for your comments and I really appreciate them. I'd like to put aside the fact, cause I, I hope that this has not been that politicized, that there's under blind currents, all those sort of things. To say a couple of things. One is that I sat in on the executive committee meetings that they had for this task force and they had been going for six or seven months and there really had not been any information generated except for the fact that the facilities committee had gone to a number of the schools, you know, had gotten organized. That piece of it was moving. Finance never met. They just hadn't met yet. The other ones, the talent retention, it was the same way. They hadn't done anything. And when Dr. Gillette was invited to come to city council last week, the request to him was, "Give us a report of what you've done." And there was no report. They had not done anything. Now that's not, I'm, I'm not saying that to blame them on that. But I'm saying that time has sort of passed, that we sort of need to, we need to move on. And I also think that it's somewhat city councils and our fault too, because as he pointed out in his presentation, we kind of let this float. You know, we told them not to meet. We said to schools, "We're not meeting. You should not meet." And, and it sat out there for a long time despite his request to do that. So, uh, this, this is awkward or unusual, but I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna vote against this motion because I think there have been three different ways that this could be handled that have been discussed the last couple of months. One is you keep the same charter and keep trying what you do. The other is you modify the charter to make it pertinent to where we are now. Or the third is you kick it down the road, which really means we're just never gonna deal with it. And I personally think, I would like to see us modify the charter so it does emphasize the facilities. Cause I think that's the big piece that we need help with. And I agree that, you know, there's more to Lynchburg City School than facilities, but we need that help with the community and with the experts on that committee. But I also have the reservations on, you know, that I stated previously, that this, you know, the train may be out of the station. And if the board decides that they don't want to support the task force, I'm a member of the board and I'll support their will. But I do hope that we will step up to do the community part of getting input and getting input from experts to help us with this, if that's what the board decides. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've heard some things here that I believe to been, be inaccurate because there is documentation out there where, uh, Dr. Gillette actually contacted both the school board and council and asked about restarting the committees and getting going during COVID. And I would encourage the press to FOIA all of that information, cause it is out there. I, I restate, I will be voting against this motion. There's no politics here, folks. The fact of the matter is, we have experts in their fields to be able to help us with providing the information about our school systems. What are we so afraid of? What are we afraid of finding out and being able to address head-on for our students? It's not politics. It's getting information to make educated decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And again, I stand in record that this board has responded very timely to every request. And so at this particular time, is there any further discussion regarding Dr. Sinha?
I, I guess I feel like this motion is a little bit premature, um, given that we are gonna have a joint session with city council. I would feel more confident in my ability to vote after hearing, again, what they have to say. Or maybe I missed it in the, their meetings, um, but for a chance for us to talk together. I think what's happening is we're all talking in cross purposes. And we're not really kind of saying the same thing or understanding it in the same way. I would, uh, support a modification of the charter, given that so much time has passed. Opportunities to do certain things perhaps have been missed. And maybe refocus that charter and make very clear what are appropriate actions of that task for, force that they are empowered to do and what are things that they can recommend that the school board definitely is empowered to do. And not, um, make assumptions that, um, again, that they're, for example, behaving like a shadow school board or something like that. So, um, I'll, I will abstain from this vote because I don't feel comfortable voting on the issue as it is right now.
Thank you, Dr. Sinha. If there's no further discussion, we're going, oh, yeah, please, excuse me, Dr. Nillis.
I guess I need to at least articulate, uh, why I'm gonna vote. I'm not gonna support this. I wanna support it because I think, um, that the task force, I think time, the, uh, events have, have passed them up. There's, there, there's some areas they can probably still contribute in. We certainly need to have a discussion about, about, um, what those areas are. I don't support them, uh, defining a new scope for them to work at all. But, you know, part of the reason to have the, the, this discussion with the city council is to talk through these things. So I think it's premature to, um, for this, for this mo- motion, so I'm, I will not be supporting it.
All right. Is there any further questions or discussion on the matter? Mr. Harvey?
I, I'd just like a point of order to just request from Dr. Sinha why she is abstaining from this vote. There needs to be, I think there needs to be a rationale why you abstain.
Mr. Harvey, we're not going to entertain that tonight. And we've spent more than enough time on this one particular issue. So we're gonna carry this up or down and then the floor certainly will still be open before we move on to the next agenda item. If you are in support of this motion from Dr. Carter, it is a motion to suggest that we would thank the task force and leave them of their duties in relationship of what, uh, the original charter stated and allow the Lynchburg City School Board alongside with the Lynchburg City Council to, with community input, uh, push this across the finish line without delay. So if you're in support of that, you vote yes. If you're not in support of it, you would vote no. Deputy Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Trolls?
No.
Dr. Brennan?
No.
Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Nillis?
No.
Dr. Sinha?
Abstain.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
And Mr. Harvey?
No.
Where does the vote?
It fails.
Four to four with one abstention.
So the motion fails when there is not a majority. Is there any other, uh, motion? I want to caution this board that we have a two-hour meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. And it has on it, uh, budget discussions, hearing from the facility studies. And there will be very limited amount of time to have any robust discussion around this without us having some understanding. And to do that in front of others. And so, uh, hearing Dr. Nillis and others, maybe we need to give some further thought on that at this time prior to next Tuesday because it's no way you're going to be able to accomplish that. We're getting nowhere with it. We're doing the work. Is there a further discussion on this in relationship to narrowing the scope of what the task force would be doing? Mr. Trolls?
Again, coming in kind of behind all the issues, what would be, what would be the requirements to have the, uh, the revisit the, the scope to modify it? What, what the process? Do you bring this, the committee in here and we discuss it?
Not, not, not in my mind. I, I think that the original charter was reviewed, uh, was created and reviewed by this board and then by council. And, and technically speaking, if one of the two parties would, uh, back away from it, then the memorandum of understanding would then be null and void anyway. So any one of the two bodies, the council is still pondering over their thoughts on this very matter. I think tonight, at least from my perspective, the scope to include any interaction with our personnel of Lynchburg City Schools and being privy to information that the board doesn't have would be much beyond the scope of what the original charter entail. Uh, Dr. Gupta?
In the last city council meetings, city manager was very clear. And I think Dr. Gillette mentioned that his staff doesn't have any time to spare to provide information. And I don't know what the status of staffing in LCS admin building is. So when you got request of information coming and pouring, both bodies need to be aligned in providing that information. Otherwise, the task force will be rolling in for months and months and months and years. And we'll be same where we are two years after. So, uh, same issue was there before. The, the information was being asked, but it takes a lot of time to generate that. And we got five committees sending the information. Uh, it's, it's tough. But, uh, at least publicly, city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I, I heard it right that the, um, we, we, they don't have the staffing right now to be able to, uh, provide information.
That, that's what I, my understanding, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Trolls?
Thank you. And that precisely is my concern, uh, is the staffing issues that we're having, uh, in our school system as to why I would like to see the reports and let the task force do their work because it's extra man and woman power that we don't have and let them go do. They can do the community meetings and the community in, input, which I think is critical to the, uh, the task as I understand them to be by the task force. And I guess that's precisely what I'm concerned about is we don't have the bandwidth to carry out some of the activities that we'd like to do and the task force apparently does. So.
Yes, Mr. Dr. Brennan?
Dr. Coleman, I'd like to point out that when city, city council has had two conversations about this at two council meetings. And at their last one, we had a similar conversation, but half the time they ended by saying, "We're gonna have a robust discussion with this, with the joint meeting, with schools. We should move on to another agenda." And I think we're sort of the same point. I think we've had a robust discussion. I think we should move on to another item on our agenda, cause we have a lot to do. I will look forward to meeting with city council next week.
Dr. Nillis?
I'm afraid that meeting will probably end up like this one and the previous ones. If I look at, uh, I pulled up the charter and there's five areas. First one is enrollment trends and demographics. That's being addressed. The other is operations, facilities and colide, consolidation. That's being addressed. The other three are leading practices in education, programming and collaboration opportunities. That's with collaboration with the city, um, and then finance. And, and that again is like looking for opportunities, alignment and complementary nature between the school system and the city's budget process. The city manager did indicate the desire to come up with some kind of funding formula, so. so that, you know, kind of that fits in. And I think the other two, leading practices in education, programming and collaboration opportunities, you know, those are part of the original scope. I see no, personally, I have no issues with task force continuing on in those areas, but the first two, I think, are being addressed. So from my perspective, if the task force continues, it would continue with a smaller scope. That's, I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, I think we do need to think about this, and we're not going to make a decision now.
Okay. Before we get to you, Dr. Carter, I want to make sure that I'm clear. And again, this is what leadership requires, and quite frankly, I'm tired of punting. And so I want to make sure I hear, Dr. Nillis, what you just stated, because everyone may not have the same document up in front of them. Could you, if you were able to, just share with us of the original charter, what charter, what a part of it are you saying should remain?
Well, there were five parts. First was enrollment trends and demographics, that's being handled. And the second was operations, facilities and consolidation. I think that's covered by the facility studies also. And then the last three are leading practices in education, programming and collaboration opportunities. And I don't want to go into all the details, but it's just basically how vocational training, athletics, academic opportunities, and basically working with city partners to expand opportunities for the kids, and then finance. And that was study, school systems, financial structure, and long-range financial sustainability. Committee, subcommittee will be responsible for studying opportunities for the alignment and complementary nature of the school system and city's budget process, and exploring opportunities for continued and future financial investment in Lynchburg City Schools.
So of those that you're stating that would continue, would that include this talent management team piece of enrollment?
I don't see that in this original charter.
And that is creating quite a bit of energy from this one individual board member in relationship to our responsibility to take care of that. And we have internal ways in which we can do that. And so that is not included in the original charter?
It's not included in the original charter, and it's, when we voted to support this --
And I never, I personally never voted with the intention of an opportunity for individuals to communicate with staff. We, as a school board, don't have the power to do that as such. And so therefore, that's never within my understanding of what the task force would do. But we have internal means by which we can get information, whether it be exit interviews, et cetera. Dr. Carter, then Dr. Gupta.
Now, I'm kind of confused because I thought we just did a vote stating that, what was our, what did we voted to, that we do not, we no longer want, need or asking the task force?
The vote was four to four with one abstention. And according to parliamentary procedure, whenever there's a tie, the motion fails. So we're now, I'm trying, and I hear what board members are saying, but I have been, Dr. Carter and I have been in numerous meetings, we just never get anywhere with this. Dr. Gupta?
You know, people talk about, this is now how things are done in the corporate world. One thing is not done in the corporate world is that if you are my contractor and if you sign a contract with me, you're not going to talk to third party about it without talking to me, otherwise you're out of there. You will not be a contractor anymore. So I got a question for Dr. Edwards. Did Dominion Seven ever took your permission to talk to Dr. Gillett or anybody outside the school board or your administration?
No.
Yes or no?
No. Sorry.
And what I'm trying to do is to help us go into a discussion next Tuesday with a council that is equally in the same boat.
Right.
We're going to get nowhere if we don't have some understanding. We've been asked to lead, and if there are perceptions out there that we aren't leading, this could be an example of that. I asked Dr. Nillis, and he clearly helped me to appreciate, what was in the original charter and what was not. Is this the board prepared to acknowledge the wisdom to keep it at that? Dr. Carter?
Now, according to the report that Dr. Gillett gave, the board, the charter gives the education task force the opportunity to create, and that's the word he used, as many different other committees as he deems or they deem is necessary to really look at this. And from the initial conception of the education task force, I got a call and said, what are you all doing? Are you all going to be the school board or someone else doing it? And just the fact that Dr. Sinha said the shadow school board is almost as though they are dictating to us, that committee. And it's interesting how we've had male superintendents and we never needed any task force, but now we have a female superintendent, now we need a task force. And when you look at other school districts, when they are building, they may have a task force that's specifically for their facilities, but not one that has this range and scope. And this is concerning to me.
I've done my research, and I've found no task force of this nature either. And I'm not trying to hide anything. We would put internal dynamics in place that this board can get the type of information that we need to be able to make decisions within our purview. We have a superintendent that's capable of doing the work. I just don't want to keep going into meetings where we're not clear on what we're doing, and we're satisfied with that. This is two years, three years, actually. Mrs. Morrison?
That was my point, that we've had a lot of time to get information, and we've not, we don't have anything. But I do think it's time to move on from this topic.
Amen.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that this board voted twice unanimously to support the charter that Dr. Nillis just read. I agree, I think we can move on with that. I'm interested, one comment that you did make, you said that this board has the ability to conduct exit interviews.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say that, Mr. Harvey. I've never said that this board conducts exit interviews. I said internally, based upon the role of a superintendent and the superintendent's staff would conduct exit interviews and share that information in the appropriate way with the board.
Okay.
We have the internal operation to do anything we need to do.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I do believe I did have the floor. I was asking the question.
I've answered your question. That's not what I was stating.
My question, well, if that's not what you're stating, so then how is that information shared with the board? I, for one, in my almost three years serving on this board, have never received any briefing about any type of exit interview. Has anyone else that I missed?
Yeah, and I hadn't received it in the first three or four years that I've been on.
So my question is, when we look, I mean, we just had a personnel report that had over 18 people leaving just this month.
Okay. Mr. Harvey?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Harvey, we're going.
Mr. Chair, I do believe I have the floor.
Mr. Harvey, what we're going to do is that, obviously, this is not going to get us anywhere tonight, and we will move on in our agenda. I will be working with vice chair and each member of this board prior to Tuesday because going forward, this board must demonstrate its ability to lead according to our constitutional responsibility. And if there is any board member that feels as though that they would like to rewrite the Constitution of Virginia, then I would encourage you to go through that process. We have a responsibility, and let's seek to try to do that. We're going to move on now at this time to the next item on our agenda, which is our C-3 FY 2022-23 operating budget approval. Dr. Edwards and senior leadership.
So over the past couple of weeks, we have shared with you the exhaustive list of priorities, the reprioritized list, the governor's proposed budget, the House proposed budget, the Senate proposed budget, our recommendation for the average of 5%. We've tried to be mindful of requests to increase those salaries of those employees who are on the lower wage as we work our way towards hitting the living wage, which is something that we have done over the last couple of years, combined with the information that the board has requested. In addition, you asked us to look at what an 8% increase would do, and we turned around in the next meeting and showed you what an 8% increase would look like, what that impact would have on the overall budget, as well as still trying to continue to differentiate even the 8%, such that the lower-wage employees would see a higher percentage increase. At this point, the city manager has let us know that it is his recommendation that we receive level funding for what would be the fourth year, well, I think we were cut funding, because when I started, the funding was at $42 million, and now it's at $39 million. So level from what was received last year. We have proposed for the board to continue with the 5% increase. We do recognize, just as I've shared earlier, that we need to do at minimum a 5% increase for our staff. Otherwise, I do think, Mr. Harvey, we may see more people on that list of exiting just from being able to get a more competitive salary up the road. So we are standing firm with that. We have recommended a proposed budget that is in here in full transparency. Once again, we have been responsive to this board to change our practice, to use the same format that city uses so that our residents can see what the budget looks like on our end and see a similar format once it's in the city binder, and that's what you have in front of you. And to the degree that our community members, and I'd like to thank them for their comments tonight, have had questions about the budget, we've done due diligence to try to answer those as well as the ones that you've asked. And you do have in your packet from earlier meetings, a detailed overview of the CARES funding, and we do update that. You had an update on December 2021. We gave you another update at the end of February. We'll give you another update probably in April of what the CARES funding are used for and our degree of expenditures. And I will just say publicly that a large percentage of our CARES funding is used for CIP projects and to support our facilities. And I think our public needs to know that to the degree that we are team players with our city to take the money that this state has afforded us to share it with the city so that they can reinvest in the very buildings that our children are in, because as we know that the city owns the buildings and the responsibility for the buildings. So with that, we have a proposed budget that we would like per code the board to adopt. This will be the topic of our conversation with city council, and I'll just remind our community that the budget's not official until both parties have voted in affirmation of whatever that final budget will be.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And before us for action tonight is a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the FY 2022-23 operating budget. What is the pleasure of the board? Dr. Brennan?
Dr. Edwards, I know we're all exhausted from the last discussion item, but this is such an important one. Can I, first of all, as I think we've all said before, thank you so much for the information that you have given us. I wonder if you could clarify some of the information you've given us recently, and maybe this is some for you and maybe for some of Ms. Davis. Number one, you gave us a new budget request worksheet dated today, which has, the priorities were shifted a little bit to just so, I'm sorry, not shifted, but you --
Consolidated.
Where the appropriate term is. If you could just help us with that. And then also, the budget proposal that is for this meeting also does have the grants in it that does bump things up to $158 million. If someone could just comment on that, how that really is not related to operating expense, and just some of the details in that piece, I would appreciate that additional information.
Yep. I will start with the budget request sheet, and then I'll have Ms. Davis kind of come up and go over grants a little bit. So our budget request sheet, we had priority zero, one, two, three, four, five, six. Mixed in those priorities was the 5% or the 8% salary increase, and we had a spirited debate of whether or not that was a zero or a one. And to just kind of separate it from things that are going to happen regardless of what we do, which are our zeros and things that we want to have happen, we have marked items one, two, and three, which are the salary increase, as a one plus. And it also allows us to just look at that item in totality to know what that value is for the salaries. The zeros, just for community, are things that are increasing, and I'd just like to caution us that we put a fuel increase in before the real fuel increase. So we're managing that right now and also looking at that going forward. Hopefully, that'll stabilize. So that's the one thing that we did, was just put a plus one on those three tiered items. And then to condense and save paper, some of the items were the same. So for example, there was a part-time library media specialist slash testing coordinator at the 11 elementary school. So rather than having 11 lines of that, you will see where they have been combined on the second page. The numbers are still there, so folks don't think we did anything, you know, mysterious. Four, nine, 11, 55, 64, 70, 73, 86, 148, 149, and 150 are all the same position, which was that testing coordinator, library assistant, which was a part-time position. And we kept the total amount so that folks could see that it's 31, 650 per position, which is a total of 348. So that was combined. As well as, if this board does vote in support of pre-K 3 class or a pre-K 4 class, you do so on three items. You're supporting the teacher, the assistant, and the resources. If you vote it down, you're voting down all three items. No sense buying the pre-K assistant if we're not going to fund the teacher and the resources. So those items have been combined. On the bottom of the first page, you'll see number 27, 34, and 39 have all been combined, such that if the board did need to deliberate and say, you know, we're not so sure we want the pre-K, what does that cost to pull it out? You have the total cost of that. And I think those were the only things that we combined in this budget here. Okay. At the end, oh, let me talk about that, too. At the end, we also adjusted the ask, I think I mentioned that earlier, due to the fact that the voc ed, voc, CTE and vocational education revenue from the state had increased from when we first did the budget, so we did add that. And then at the end of this priority list, to make it easier for the board to deliberate, we gave a total for priority needs, zero, one, plus, and one, which are, that's the same total that it was last time. We also gave a total of just zero and one plus, which is all of the fuel increases and increases in CVC and tuition, as well as the salary increase and what that would cost, just so that the board could see the differences. There was some discussion as to whether or not we would continue to support positions that were beyond just one, two, and three. We are asking for full support of the original 5% proposal, which we condensed for you, but it's the same proposal with a lower city council ask. And then your second question was regarding all of the grant funds, which there is a separate page for the grant funds. And I do want the community to understand that money is not fungible in terms of us just receiving And I do want the community to understand that money is not fungible in terms of us just receiving fifty million dollars of grants, which we can use for anything we want. Um, it, it does not work quite that way. Even the state budget doesn't work quite that way. Some of the revenue that we, um, received, three point five million of it was for construction, school construction, so we can't use that to, um, purchase another teacher or, or another staff member in that. So Ms. Davis, you want to just give us an update on the grant page?
I just wanted just to verify, what was the question exactly with the grant? I didn't hear.
Very much. So the, the, uh, the document that you gave us, which is F, is F Y twenty-three operating budget proposal with a five percent salary increase for tonight's work session. On that, we didn't have on the, on the page one, um, we, under, so as you go through the, the revenues and expenditures just on that page, our previous document did not have that fifty million, two hundred and sixteen thousand grant number in there. So the budget was a hundred and eight million. And now that's been, so just to clarify that so that the public and everyone else understands that piece would be very helpful.
So the last document we gave you did not have the, um, anticipated grant expenditures on it at all, and we even had a little, you know, a little snippet on there saying, hey, this, we're gonna update this.
Right.
And we have a little bit more. And still, these applications aren't complete, so I can't, I mean, I'm, I'm not, these aren't exact numbers. But this was our best educated guess, um, on what we expect to see next school year with the grants. I also wanted to say that, um, some of these grants and most of these grants are multiple years. So we are not going to spend more than likely fifty million dollars next year in grants. It'll be over multiple years, depending on the grant, depending on the length that we're allowed, you know, the spending, um, timeline. So, but this just gives us an idea of what applications are out there, what we anticipate for further applications. So it's like we've already done the CARES two, we've already done the application. We've already gotten some of those funds, but we're still accounting for them in here. Cause we don't anticipate them to be spent this year.
Okay, but, hold, hold, everybody, hold it. Mr. Uh, Dr. Brennan, did you have all of what you needed?
Let me just follow one fine. So when we talk about our total operating budget for next year, we're talking about, we, we use the number of one hundred and eight million, seventy-three thousand, eighty-eight dollars.
That's our operating.
As our operating budget. The, can you just help explain, so the grant funding, how does that relate to our operating budget as compared to expense? Because I, I'm sure a lot of people look at this and say, our, our, our budget is actually a hundred and fifty-eight million.
Okay, so every one of these grants has, um, very stringent rules. There's, it has to be exactly what was written into the application, what is exactly what the grant is intended for. Like, I know for part of, of the first CARES, the first CARES, um, grant we received, we couldn't do, um, a lot of personnel costs, but then they, in the second CARES and third, but, so each grant, and I, I don't have that exhaustive list of what everything, what's included in each grant, but I could get that for you because we have the applications. And if you needed a list, we could obviously do that for you. But, um, yes, it, we, we don't have, for most of these grants, we don't have, um, really any say on what is, what it is spent on. It's already laid out in the application.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Harvey's hand first, then we'll go to, um, Dr. Gupta, and then Ms. Morrison.
Yeah, I, I think just, uh, I, I kind of tie, tie, like to tag in to Dr. Brennan's question because my understanding of this is this is for our CARES funding. It's over multiple years, and it could be used for expenditures on facilities like H V A C repair, et cetera, that are city-owned buildings. This is not part of our operating budget. So earlier, when someone used the hundred and fifty-eight thousand, a hundred and fifty-eight million dollar budget, and then divided that by our number of students, that was inaccurate, that was misinformation, and it was wrong.
And we don't report that to the V D O E. Every district is required to report their, um, per people's spending, and it's always on operating because that's what you really have the control over.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Sinha, then Ms. Morrison, and then Mr. Tross.
Dr. Gupta was.
I'll go after the.
No, no. I recognized, uh, after Mr. Harvey, I recognized Dr. Sinha, Ms. Morrison, and then if, Dr. Gupta, if you want to speak, and then Mr. Tross.
Uh, two major things. Um, looking at, uh, the, um, grant expenditure, there's a footnote to.
Dr. Sinha, I don't think that all of the, we're gonna wait, you, you, what you have to say has to be heard by all board members.
I'm sorry?
I just wanted you to wait so that all board members.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you.
I thought you were asking.
No, ma'am. You, now you can go ahead so that you have the attention of all the board members.
Are you finished?
Yes, I think there was a side conversation.
Thank you.
We're tuned in.
Yes.
Sorry.
So on the, uh, grants, there's a, uh, uh, number two footnote, but I don't see it in the document. And then I think for clarity and to avoid misinformation, it would be helpful to separate out the kind of one-off CARES funding, anything COVID-related that's exceptional and we're getting because of the pandemic versus some of these other things like I, I think the title one, Part A, or the kind of things that we, unless I'm mistaken, things that we routinely get year after year, and we, we build in, that we count on, correct?
Yes.
I think it would be helpful to.
So that's what the two footnote was?
Okay. But even in the totals.
And I, yes, and I don't know what happened to it.
And, and to recognize that they're not for single operating and sort of clarify that a lot of that does go to that so that nobody gets confused or is swayed by misinformation.
Yes, I, I, I will put that back in the document.
And then, um, are we gonna have a chance to go through the additional budget requests like we did last year to discuss them one by one and, and, uh, and vote on them?
That is up to you all in terms of what happens next with city council. So again, we've had several things happen in the past where we've had to come back and cut a million dollars. And that starts the conversation about what you, what would be your priorities. I think after we originally presented you with the hundred and fifty-some-odd, um, top priority, high priority requests from the buildings and the departments, um, then we went back and presented to you as administrative team working in consult with our building and our department leaders, we prioritize them as we, as we recommended to you. So, um, there was no plan from this point to go item by item by item like we did last year. Um, as I understood it, that might not have been the most efficient way to do the budget.
It may not have been efficient, but I felt like it was due diligence to review those and discuss those, especially where there were different options available. But, I mean, I was just asking, cause you had mentioned as you were summarizing this, as we deliberate, so I was wondering, are we gonna deliberate some of these things, or is it just?
Well, I think for.
Sort of a full package and.
Yeah, where, where we are right now, the, as I said, the city manager has suggested level funding. This administration has recommended that we continue with the five percent, with the positions that are in there, which is over level funding, uh, and this board has to vote. You all may say, well, we gonna, we want you to go back and give us a level funded budget, and, and then you would start to prioritize. Or you may say, we understand administration is recommending the five percent, but we wanna push for the eight percent and, and, and take that to city council and have that discussion next, next week.
So, so just to clarify, Mr. Chair, um, if you're asking us to vote on this, it's not voting on a final budget proposal?
That's correct.
Just to allow the superintendent to put this forward as a part of the negotiations, correct?
That's been our normal practice.
So these, yeah, these things would not be locked in.
Right.
Because of our vote tonight, correct?
That is correct. We always.
Thank you.
Will come back with, uh, what we have after council has made their decisions. Uh, we're gonna go to Ms. Morrison now?
I've almost forgotten what I wanted to say, but I remembered. The city manager recommended, uh, living wage for the employees in, in city employment that don't have it. And I think that number was.
Thirteen. They have thirteen members then.
We have worked hard to try to get our employees to living wage, and how many do we have?
Right now, we have two hundred and twenty-nine that are below.
Living wage. Now, we're making progress, but at level funding, that's in jeopardy.
Yes.
The other thing, uh, uh, which to me doesn't make much sense, if we're gonna recommend living wage for one set of employees, why would we not support it for another? The other thing is this final request is based on information from both the House budget and the Senate budget, and that amount could change based on which bill gets passed. Correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
So we could have a little more money or a little less.
Yes.
Correct.
And we won't know that until the end of April.
April, that's right.
Okay.
Well said. All right, the chair recognizes Dr. Gupta if he still wants to speak, and then Dr. Carter.
You know, I, I, as you know, I've been against new positions all along. But as I was sitting in the city council and read Mr. Gordon's report, I felt like Spend Fest, with my funny accent, it may not come out, spend means spending fest. Spending festival was going on there, and Lynchburg City Schools was left out. So we were left out from the Spend Fest, and I'll give you some numbers. And, uh, I, these are basically from news that advance, so I didn't cook them up. Last year's city budget was four hundred and twenty-six million dollars, and Lynchburg City Schools' budget was forty-two point nine million dollars. Means ten cents on a dollar. If your Johnny goes to school, he was getting ten cents on your tax dollars for K through twelve education. This year's city budget is five hundred and ninety-five million dollars, point four. And the school budget is recommended to be thirty-nine point eight. That means six cents on a dollar. So Johnny's getting four cents less for his, or, his education compared to the last year. What did we do wrong? And it bothers me as I look at that presentation that we are the stepchild. Is it the time for school boards to say, let's have a referendum on the, on the ballot? Let's make school boards revenue collectors. Let's not have middle people in between who channel the money in and out. How much do we get out of the taxpayer dollars? So I'm saying, let's vote for it. Let's join to be a part of this Spend Fest. Because they're spending money on positions which the library doesn't even exist in the mall yet. There, there's no push to close the downtown location, but they are pushing us to close our schools. They're pushing us to register to our schools. It, it, it personally bothered me. Uh, not as a, as a school board member, as a citizen of the city of Lynchburg, uh, as, that, uh, this, so, Dr. Edwards, you know, I've been adamantly against all your positions, all the time consistently. And I'm gonna break it this time. So you bring a position forward, and you will have me. I don't know what the other board will be, but I will support those positions because we don't want our kids to be left behind. No way. They should be the first priority. If a dollar is going in taxpayer money, what's your six cents on a dollar? Because the city's jobs, if I seize education and services, you know, so ninety-four cents are going for services, and education is getting only six cents on a dollar. People talk about shame. This is shameful. When I looked at those numbers, they were shameful. I was ashamed of myself that why we have let it down up to a point where we're basically our handholders. You know, in a faucet, and a drop comes, and I drink it, and then I wait for the next drop to be yielded to us. So the, the, it's shame for the teachers, the staff, the students, and the citizens that we have gone from ten cents on a dollar to six cents on a dollar, and we pushed hard to stay, keep that position. And, uh, so I will vote for your budget, and, uh, you bring in the positions, and, um, I'll be adamantly supportive of it.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, Dr. Carter.
I just read today where Amherst, as they voted on their budget, was a six point five percent increase for their staff people, and then we wonder why people leave our positions here and go right across to Amherst. And so I, I know that, um, we're, it was stated that we'll be just getting, giving level funding, but I question whether or not we can ask a different way. And that is to have the one point two million dollars that was set aside, taken from our budget, I think in twenty nineteen, for the educational task force, if we can have that back since they haven't met since during the pandemic. And also, if we can keep our incumbents this year. So, um, that can be a win-win, and that will take care of that, hopefully, the two point six.
Thank you. Mr. Tross, and then Dr. Gupta.
I want to thank you and Dr. Edwards for your transparency on this budget. Um, I think, I appreciate the grant figure being identified in there, and I think it was a, a little bit misleading, or at least misconstrued to have that as an operating budget. And I just want to make sure that everybody was aware of that, that there is not a, a hundred and fifty-some-odd million dollar budget requirement. There is fifty million dollars of that or so is grant money, which we have in front of us. That, as has been said many times, it's not necessar, it's earmarked for certain items that we have to abide by. So I appreciate that, the comments, and I too like to see the breakout as, as footnote two would identify. So thank you for the transparency to both you and, uh, Dr. Carter, and Dr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Tross, Dr. Gupta.
I just wanted to share one more number I forgot to mention. There's a conversation, there was a talk about enrollments going down. It's about hundred students less, so if you look in the line of the budget, uh, that to me comes out about one point three percent. So, but when we are losing four percent, that's too much. That, it means the motive is not enrollment, that's just an excuse. When you are going, you know, a fair allocation, an equitable education, uh, is, and these, uh, the fact of the matter is the special education needs, and, uh, Ms. Morrison, you are the expert in special education, needs have gone up in the district.
And cost.
And, and cost, uh, associated with it because the, it requires a lot more manpower. This is a human-intensive industry. This is, you cannot use robots to teach students. You need, uh, humans. So I just forgot to mention that one point three percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, and I then want to remind the board, this is a potential action item tonight, and we hope that, uh, someone will eventually make a motion to that effect. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I, I will not be supporting this budget as presented. I, all along have, uh, tried to champion at least a minimum of an eight percent budget for our staff. I will continue to do that. I, I feel like Dr. Gupta kind of teed it up for me, um, when, when he talked about the, the, the city's proposed budget, and yet we're being requested to, to seek level funding. You know, inflation's going up, and so if, if we are not addressing that, uh, with our staff salaries, they're actually losing money, uh, they're getting less money. I think it's important, um, to, to reflect back on an email that, that Dr. Edwards shared with a member of the community this afternoon about the percentages that other schools have that is beyond us. That was their wages for last year. All of those schools are also getting the same five percent that we're getting from the state. So they're raising, uh, at least five percent, if not more, and they were already, um, a half of percent or higher than us. So I, again, will champion, uh, that eight percent for our, for our staff, and I would like to see that be in the budget that we present to city council next week.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I will be supporting the recommendation coming from the superintendent tonight on this matter for the reasons previously articulated. I do know that there can well be a, a diligent campaign to encourage persons to come to the budget, uh, discussion on the twenty-second after our two-hour meeting that council will have, uh, next, uh, Tuesday, uh, maybe so, and continue advocacy, but there, there, there are other dynamics to budgeting going forward. We got a, um, piece coming from the city manager around spending formulas, et cetera, to maybe take the politics out and, and, and do what's right for the. and, and, and do what's right for the citizens of Lynchburg beyond all of those dynamics. And so, um, is there anyone else who wants to have a discussion, uh, Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna roll a quandary here with, with this budget. I would like to, I support the raise for staff. I'd like to see a six and a half or so percent. Um, you know, we have said all along, we need to raise our, our salaries for our teachers to be competitive with surrounding school divisions, and this doesn't do that. I did notice the city has increased the starting pay for public safety, and that has made a big difference. And I think we should advocate a similar, um, move to raise starting salaries for public education staff. I mean, it helps with recruiting and ret, uh, retaining staff. So, I would like to see a, um, a, a bigger raise, like I say, six and a half percent or so at a minimum. I don't agree with all the, um, ads on, uh, on the personnel side with some. I have some concerns longer term with sustainability, and we are entering an inflationary period, and it's, uh, painful when we come out of that. Uh, I think we need to keep that, uh, in mind, that's, that's a longer-term perspective, but, uh... So, I, um, I won't be supporting this, uh, particular budget for, for those reasons.
All right, uh, Ms. Morrison?
Dr. Edwards, I truly appreciate the work of you and your staff to get this budget into us, and I am, um... Mr. Harvey, you don't fall out of your seat, but I agree with you on this, on the eight percent. I think it's time we step up for, for our, our staff, and I think this is an opportunity to do so. And we may not get it, but we can go out fighting for it.
Absolutely.
And I think our staff, all our staff, every single one deserves more. And if, I know one thing, if you don't ask, you will not get. So, we at least need to ask, and we need to be able to defend it, and I think we can do it well.
Mr. Tross?
I too have difficulty with the budget for the same reasons. I really think, uh, I would really like to see our staff get more than the five percent. I think they deserve it. I think in order for us to be competitive with surrounding communities, counties, we need to step up. And again, I, I don't like to spend money, I'm cheap, but we have got to step up to retain and obtain the talent that we need to solve some of the issues that are facing us in our school system. And it just, unfortunately, it's gonna cost some money. And, uh, for those reasons, um, you know, I, I, I would not be able to support this budget as written, but would support a, an eight percent increase budget.
All right, uh, this board is not, uh, scarce on surprises. Each week, we have gone back and forth and back and forth on this matter. Uh, the chair would simply want to know a motion from this body. Uh, I don't know how that impacts the bottom-line numbers, Dr. Edwards. Uh, once again...
I have the eight percent.
I was gonna ask that.
Yep.
Yeah.
The eight percent total operating budget would be one hundred and ten million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine.
Once again, say it, please.
One hundred and ten million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the city portion?
City portion. Well, we have to do that.
We can do the money for quick.
But, um, it was about forty-five million, four hundred and thirty-seven, four twenty-eight. Now, there is a little, we're gonna have to do a little... About forty-five million, almost, maybe a little less, forty-four. Because we had that, um, funding that was returned to us from the state, which was not included in this eight percent. So, I would have to...
All right, so... With what we have, is it thirty-nine?
Now, we're recommending more than that.
No, I, I understand that, but...
The level funding is at thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine. And we were going, the budget that you're presenting is at forty-two?
Forty-two, four, five.
And this would take it up to forty-four?
Forty-four, close to forty-four.
Yeah, still waiting on April numbers to see what that would look like. All right, was someone willing to make a motion to that effect? The forty-four million, which would take the numbers...
I'll move.
All right, Dr. Sinha has made the motion. Again, I want us to be clear on the motion that we're making, so what, what are you moving?
I'm moving that we, um, for purposes of presenting a budget proposal to, to, uh, city council that we go with, um, with the budget as presented, with the one change of bumping up salaries across the board to an eight percent raise as opposed to a five percent raise.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made by Dr. Sinha, seconded by Mr. Harvey, and further questions or discussion? Um, Dr. Carter?
Now, does that reflect, or would that include getting most of those two hundred and twenty-nine people up to living wage?
And, and all the benefits and retirement associated with that?
Yeah, well, we calculated it, we calculated it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and any further questions or discussion on the, um, motion that has been made and seconded, uh, Dr. Sinha and Mr. Harvey? All right, here ain't none. If you are in favor of the motion made by Dr. Sinha, which would, in essence, take our ask to counsel to forty-four million or whatever the exact number is, uh, you would vote yes, which would allow us to, to go up to eight percent in relationship to our employees that would be involved in that, uh, number that was previously stated. If you're not in support of it, uh, you can say no. Again, I do want to acknowledge that I will be voting no, not because I don't agree with giving our, uh, people everything that we need. I just need to be sure that we can sustain it, and I need to be sure that we have thought through what all of this means in relationship to what we're doing, uh, for kids. And so, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Brennan?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
No.
Dr. Nillis?
No.
Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes, and so, we'll be prepared to present that, Dr. Edwards, next, uh, Tuesday night. We're now going to go on to C four, which is the Bass Elementary School Calendar. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely. So, you recall that the calendar committee worked to do the LCS calendar, which you approved. And once that was approved, we turned it over to, uh, Ms. Hendricks, um, from Bass, because, you know, she runs a year-round school with intercession, um, and she worked in conjunction with our transportation department to do the Bass year-round calendar that, that, um, sort of, uh, coalesces with the LCS calendar with some, um, adjustments for the year-round school. So, what you have before you is the Bass calendar as proposed, um, by, um, the Bass, Bass staff in line with the LCS calendar.
All right, this is before us for action tonight. Is there a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three Bass Elementary School Calendar?
I move.
Dr., Mr. Harvey is making the motion, and Ms. Tross is will second it. Any further questions or discussion? Here, yes, Mr. Harvey?
I just would also like to point out, again, I, I say this every year, just want to make sure that we keep in mind, um, textbooks, curriculum, everything else, that they start early, if we can get a start on that, so we, uh, uh, have them prepared and ready to go when they're ready to go earlier. Thank you.
All right, um, Madam Deputy Clerk, if you please call the roll?
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you, board. We'll now move to C five, which is our facility stud, study update, part one, which is being done internally here of our elementary school buildings, Dr. Edwards.
Yes, so, I brought this back on the radar because in November, and I included in Board docs the presentation that Dominion Seven gave in November, seemed like such a long time ago. Um, and inclusive of that was a timeline, we're a little bit behind the timeline. But, um, we're about thirty days out from getting, a little bit more than thirty days out, from getting the final demographic study from, um, Dominion Seven. So, it's a perfect time for us to get this board and our community ready to receive. Um, I like to say, uh, we, we're gonna be alert, aware, involved, and invested as we move forward. So, just to bring back some of the conversation, and I know it's been a while since we, we talked about that. The facility study had four parts to it. It, there was the condition, facilities condition, um, which looked at the buildings, the property, the HVA plumbing systems inside. Um, it looked at the usage and utilization capacity of the buildings. Um, and then there's a demographic study, which is the part that we don't have yet, uh, which is looking at our current enrollment, um, looking at specialty programs, because we have schools of year, uh, innovation, we have year-round schools, we have, um, Go Center opportunity at an elementary school, as well as how all that impacts our busing. Um, we also have, and you have, a beautiful color-coded map which shows, um, our elementary schools and which neighborhoods are assigned to which schools. So, you can see how, um, we are currently aligned with that, um, as well. So, the, the, uh, demographic study will include all of that as well as enrollment projections. And if you recall, when I did the budget last year, talked a little bit about the Weld and Cooper, and I can send that back out to you. Um, again, it was one of the items that, um, I'd actually, uh, received from UVA in terms of our projected enrollment and looking at particularly our elementary enrollment. And at that time, when we were talking about the budget, um, last year, uh, we were looking at kindergarten in, in particular, and wondering why, over the last several years, even before, you know, I came here, that the kindergarten enrollment was going down. And one of the things suggested in the Weld and Cooper study was that you have families that live in Lynchburg, they have toddlers, um, and as their children grow, they look for affordable, single-family homes, and it's cheaper in the counties, and we're not building as many affordable, single-family homes. Uh, we have previously received the In-Out Report, uh, which is how many people are coming into the division and out of the division, a little different in the pandemic, but the trends of that show that it was pretty neutral and not that we were receiving, you know, a whole bunch of kindergartners, and then mid-year, everyone just left the division. So, our reports did not show that, they just showed that those, those birth to five-year-olds, some of those five-year-olds never made it into our school. Um, that being said, uh, calling the question on, all right, so we are seeing our elementary, um, enrollment go down over the years, um, and, and we kind of waited for information. When information didn't happen, I have a wonderful team that works with me in the support of the board. That's how we started the facility study, so we could take a look at, um, what's going on. Uh, again, at heart, when I arrived, one of the first things that was shared with me was on the docket, and actually, if, if, if that had come true, we'd probably be right breaking ground for a new Sandusky Elementary School right now. Um, four years ago, it was on the docket for about, um, twenty million dollars to build a new school. I think the cost of that now, looking out, is somewhere between thirty-two and four, and thirty-five million dollars, just in, in the four years. So, we are looking at our facilities, we are looking at our enrollment, we are looking at our law some programs, everything from our schools of innovation to our, um, year-round schools, um, to the wonderful thing. We're gonna have our Suzuki violin, things that make, uh, Lynchburg City Schools unique. So, it's program and brick and mortar. I don't want anyone to think we just look at brick and mortar, we actually look at what's best, um, for our kids. But we're here, and when I say we're here, I've heard things that it's, the cans have been kicked down the curb and the whole, no more kicking. We are right here, where we are as this board, and again, I commend you, taking a very close look at our facility study. And within, you know, a little over a month, we're gonna have the complete study. So, we need to be ready, we need to have a plan for, um, what's gonna happen. The factual things that I have right now, I've given you a copy of sort of a one-pager that just outlines our elementary buildings, and I think, Mr. Harvey, you said, here's something we know. Our buildings are old, right? The oldest one being RS Payne, the original building, nineteen twenty-six. But even our young buildings, um, Linkhorn being the youngest, and its original footprint is from nineteen sixty-six. So, um, even our youngest elementary buildings are in need of some attention. Also, if you look at the preliminary condition of our buildings, and part of this is just age, and part of it is, um, not doing maintenance when you should do maintenance on a building. Um, and I liken that to a car, you know, you gotta get that oil changed. You can't wait five years to get your first oil change, it might be damaging to other parts of the car, and a lot more costly than it would have cost just to get the oil changed. And if you look at any of our capital improvement plans over a long, um, time span, you'll see where maintenance has slid out years, um, and we have not done things to our elementary buildings that we should have done over the years. Uh, no secret that the building in most need is Sandusky Elementary School, that has been the topic of conversation. And I suggest that we, at this point, um, come to the, uh, I guess, alert, aware, and involved and informed that we know that it is going to be too costly to try to renovate Sandusky Elementary School to a level that's a twenty-first-century school. So, we are definitely looking at the choice of having to either replace it or some other option that we need to be exploring. And that's where I want this board to start those conversations, start having those conversations with our community regarding, um, those options. The facility study will give us a lot of information to start those conversations about what are our options here in Lynchburg City Schools. But one option that we don't have, and really, the purpose of tonight is just to take one option off the table, is do nothing. Right? We all have to agree around this table that one option has to go. The do-nothing option has to go, and that we are being called to act. Um, and although I have mentioned Sandusky Elementary School as the school that is in most need, one of the other topics of conversation is redistricting and rezoning, which could affect multiple schools, if not every school in Lynchburg City Schools, which is why I gave you a map, because I need you to really focus on where our schools are and how our neighborhoods are assigned to schools. And again, we know that we're gonna have to act, we may have to make some hard decisions about rezoning, um, to, to balance out our schools and make some choices for kids. And whenever you do that, there's facts about numbers and building and costs and programming, and then there's feelings that people have because they are connected to their buildings, their communities, and so on and so forth. This board, I know, will not operate on facts alone, and we're gonna do our due diligence to really engage the community in conversations about, you know, what are the best options for our kids? And even if brick and mortar must change, what's so special about that culture at that school that we need to preserve that? And we need to enhance that, and we need to make sure that we have that moving forward. And obviously, if we build a new school, what's important to be in that new school, and what are those services? And how do we preserve those services? So, just looking at this information that I shared with you, um, in addition to the Sandusky discussion, which really predates, um, me, I like to say B.C. before Crystal, um, there are other things to consider as well. You have several buildings that are gonna be up in the next couple of years for renovation as well. There's a cost to that. You got Linkhorn, Paul Monroe, and then RS Payne would be the next ones that are up also for renovation. So, there's a lot of information to digest, there's a lot of information to, um, still receive when we get the demographic study. I am in no way suggesting that tonight this board make any decisions except for one. Just commit that do nothing is off the table. The next thing that we need to do is just be open, um, and again, engaged with our community. Um, and we have to hear some tough stuff. Uh, whenever you start to look at this, and you look at, um, enrollment and programs and zoning and, and breakdown of schools, um, sometimes the information is hard to hear, but it's information that we, we need to hear. So, knowing that in a month... So knowing that in a month, we're going to be sitting right in this room with Dominion Seven presenting to us, we need an action plan that says, what happens after we get the information, right? Once it becomes public and we share it and we recognize that lots of folks watch our school board meetings, but not everybody watches our school board meeting. So how do we get this information out? So the other thing that you have, and I really do appreciate my team and many of them here, Steve's back there, he's been working very, very hard, is you have a list of where we're going to have these conversations. Obviously, tonight, we're having the one conversation, we're committing to one thing, that do-nothing is off the table. We have a joint city schools meeting next week, which part of that conversation is, we know that we provide the programming for our students, we provide the experiences for our students, but the city owns the buildings. So we have to work together with them with regard to the decisions that we're going to make. April nineteenth is the work session where Dominion Seven will be back to present the final part of their study, which is the demographic study. And then what our team has suggested is, and you have a list of tentative dates, because we don't want anyone to hear information at a board meeting and not have an opportunity to talk, to share. And by anyone, I mean the families who attend that school, the staff members who work in that school. You know, not, no one should have to read it in news in advance or WSET or Facebook. They should be hearing from us, they should be engaging with us, and we should provide opportunities for them to share with us, in addition to using our website to put up frequently asked questions and keep people informed. So you have a list of tentative meeting dates based on neighborhoods that are immediately after our April nineteenth meeting. So we have been doing, scheduling, community conversations on Mondays. But we've pretty much stolen the April, the end of April and May Mondays to be specifically about elementary facilities. And we've kind of zoned them so that it's more geographical, with Sandusky, Sheffield, Perry Mountain Heritage being one evening of a meeting, Paul Monroe and Bedford Hills being another one, TC Miller, Linkhorn and Darrington, and then RS Payne, Bass and Hutcheson, and then having a wrap-up. And the purpose of those neighborhood meetings is to really do those listening tours, because we need to also engage our community in the possibility of new school construction, closing schools if that's where the facilities information, demographic information, is leading us to consolidation of schools, if that's a viable option, and also zoning and rezoning of schools. And none of these decisions should be made in isolation in a boardroom without really significantly engaging the community, the stakeholders, the staff. We can have equal meetings in terms of, similar to how we did the calendar, we have a personnel advisory committee, we have a parent advisory committee, we have PTO meetings. Anywhere people gather, we need to be there, having these conversations with folks. And we're going to need help from our community to make sure that we reach everyone, because everyone won't come to a board meeting, or they won't come to certain places. So this is just a tentative list of the work that we have to do. And timing is important. If we're going to make any critical changes, and I'm talking if there are big changes for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we can't be sitting here March of twenty-four, talking about twenty-three, talking about what we're going to do in August. It's too late. We need to know, this is me as your superintendent, I need to know by September thirtieth, what's our phase look like? What's phase one, what's phase two, phase three? And they could change and morph a little bit, but we need a clear direction so that this time next year, we're not discussing what we're going to do. We're really ingrained in it. And the budget that we present to you reflects the priorities that we came up with in terms of these initial conversations. So I am pushing us, the same way I pushed us to just, let's do this facility study, I am pushing us to say, let's get out in the conversation and have those tough conversations. Let's give ourselves a, we need to really do due diligence, September thirtieth. Between April and May twenty-third, you're probably like, why are you going so hard then? My kids are still in school, my families are still here. I want to talk to the people while they're in school. Summertime, we have people who travel, who do all kinds of things. I need every voice. And then we're going to need, and I don't know what form that'll take, we'll figure that out, a committee of folks that involves school board members, council members, school administration members, and community members. And many of the community members have already expressed interest in participating and being a part of this as we move forward. So I wanted to bring this to your attention, because like, we're thirty days out, so I've got to get my get-ready speech, and I'm doing my, coming soon, coming soon, we're going to have conversations about this. Because this is tough work, this is hard work, and, but we're ready for it. And I think our community is ready for it. And I have to tell you, in looking at our schools, our kids deserve excellent facilities. You all have been terrific in saying, the people who are teaching our kids, the people who are working with our kids, the people who are servicing, they deserve excellent salaries. But don't the kids also deserve excellent facilities in terms of where they are? And we want to make sure that we do due diligence to move in that direction and give the community of what we need. So tonight was not about making any decisions. This is my cheerleader pitch and my one commitment, and I'm going to ask you all the time, you'll see it in my newsletter now, what's the one thing we did agree on? Do-nothing is not an option for Lynchburg City Schools, especially since we've gone ahead and pushed forward with our facility study. So we will finalize these dates as we get closer to the information. And what I would like is for you all to join us at these meetings. I also want city council to join us at these meetings. I want my staff to join us at these meetings, because people need to hear from all of us. There are so many perspectives. And when we have them all in the room, we can make a better decision together. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And I do want, I see your hand, Mr. Harvey. So we have a plan for interaction of community around these elementary facilities, et cetera, going forward, that's engaging the public and so forth. Is that what you're saying to us?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, and we have, we, this work must be done. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Edwards, in looking at the dates, is there any way possible we could kind of maybe reassemble some of the schools? Because I think each board member should definitely be in attendance at the school that's within their district. And when I, I just, I wanted to make sure I double-check these for some of the other districts as well. For instance, the May second dates, both of those schools are in District One. So I'm just wondering how we could be at multiple locations. I know District Two is...
We're going to do a big meeting, and it might, like, if you're looking at the May second, we might host it at Bedford Hills, for Bedford Hills and Paul Monroe together.
Okay.
But I want, I want you to come to more than just your district.
I plan to come to all of the three.
I'm sorry, I was thinking that you were...
No, no, I should have made that clear. Yeah, I was doing more of a geographical, like, I don't want people to have to travel all the way.
Okay. I want us to move on in the agenda. I was certainly going to make every effort to be at every one of them, and thank you for sharing the information tonight, Dr. Edwards. But now move on to D1, public participation at school board meetings and distinguished members of the board. I did ask for this to be included on the agenda along with our vice chair, and I did get some very detailed thoughts from one of our school board members, Mr. Harvey, around this issue. So I thought it only appropriate to bring it before the board for your consideration. You are aware of the fact that we do have an existing policy, excuse me, BDDHZ, also KDZ, around public participation at school board meetings. When COVID hit us, we did receive some external pressure, and recognizing those dynamics, we included voicemail and letters. And so what is the pleasure of the board around our current policy? Do we want to now, before I get to, Mr. Tros, the April school board meeting, I do want to be clear what the expectations of the board are around this policy, and also some guidance. As you know, we've been dealing with this for two years. We've had boards around this country, having people throw things at each other, fighting and being in board meetings all night. I do take some pride in the fact that we have not had that here as we have tried to navigate these very tumultuous terrains. But I will not tolerate profanity in our school board meetings. And so I just need to have an understanding of where the board is at this time. Board members? Mr. Harvey?
Well, I'll start. I agree with you wholeheartedly, Mr. Chair. You know, it's interesting, we all received the email from all of our principals stating that with poor behavior being represented as it was at our last board meeting with some of the language, what example does that set for our students? And how they interact with their teachers within the schools? I, for one, when I was at Virginia School Board Association meeting, participated in a class where several different boards talked about their public comment section. I think it's important that, first off, that we ask the presenter to identify their district. That's actually in our policy, their address. If they don't wish to give their address, at least if they would give their district that they're in. I think it's also important that when we have people who say that they speak for a group, I think that I would like to suggest that a list of the members of their group need to be submitted along with their presentation, so we know who is being spoken for. And there were some other recommendations, one of which was that the first group of individuals being allowed to speak would be our students and staff, that they would be allowed to speak first, and then it opened to the general public. So those are just some options I would like to throw out. I don't, I personally do not have a problem with receiving comments via voicemail or email, as long as they fall within the time period. I would also like for us to get back to using the clock so our speakers, you know, know what their time limits are as well. So those are just my observations.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And again, I don't want this to carry on very long, but if nothing else, I need some basic guidance prior to our April, first meeting in April, where we do have public comments listed at that time. Dr. Carter?
I'm in favor of us going back to the policy, what happened, or how we conducted the public comment prior to the changes that happened due to COVID, that people will come in and speak and follow the policy. All of the, most of the things identified that Dr. Mr. Harvey stated, we already have in our policy, BDDHZ, and we just need to make sure that we're following that.
Okay. Ms. Morrison?
You know, I did some research with the, on the FCC and their requirements for public speaking, particularly what's considered family-friendly hours, and I think it's six AM to ten PM, and that if that is violated, the FCC could investigate if a complaint is filed. And I don't have a lot of experience with FCC, but I did have to apply for a license to broadcast news. And they were very specific on the actions. And if I may be wrong, but profanity is not covered under freedom of speech during family-friendly live broadcast.
And again, thank you, Ms. Morrison. I wanted to be clear that I'm not focusing on any one particular person. I'm just thinking about the generalization of all of this. Students and families may or may not be able to opt out of a class and certain course material. We have a process for all of that. But persons who are watching our broadcasts do not have an opt-out option, if it's live. And I'm congregated around the television or whatever device, my phone or whatever, they don't have that option. And so we must protect the integrity of what we are as a school board in our school board meetings. And so, again, we could go on and on. Mr. Harvey, thank you for your submissions. Certainly, all of them are worthy of some thought and consideration. I don't know if we want to get into all of that specificity tonight. I just need to have some direction. And so, and go ahead, Dr. Sinna, please.
Well, I would support listing consequences for people who regularly violate these rules. Sort of like a three strikes, you're out. Because even though we enumerate what these things are, there are no penalties for if you engage in this, if you violate the policy. So that's something to consider. And then I'm in favor of expanding access to public comments. I know how difficult it is for me to get here at five o'clock, and I'm on the board. And so I would welcome, with technology, the ability for people to phone it in, as long as they send it by an appropriate time or mail it in, and it's within the three-minute limit, so that everybody has an opportunity to be heard, and that we go out of our way to enable that.
So far, I'm hearing, stay where we are. Go ahead, Dr. Gupta.
You know, Supreme Court, I'm not a lawyer, but Supreme Court is very clear about First Amendment rights, but there are boundaries, they have to decide case after case, and vulgarity is one of them. Sometimes a speech may be offensive, but as you said, it's not easy to bludge a word when it's said on a live TV. So it puts on a red line, you know, in terms of what the intent of the First Amendment is and how it's being exercised. So people have to be cautious. But I like to bring one more thing to the board's consideration is, you know, we're talking about public speaking, about our own discussions, if there could be a policy to restrict the discussion on each agenda item, fifteen minutes, half hour, one hour, four hours? So I don't sit here for five hours every board meeting. And like we limit public speakers to three minutes, so limit each board member to one minute, one hour, two hours, so I know how long the agenda will last.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. I'd like to recognize Dr. Ellis, if he would like to speak, and then I have a little recommendation.
Yeah, I'm good with the policy as it is. And as regards to board discussions going on and on, you can always make a motion to end discussion. It just requires a two-thirds vote, and just a matter of how patient you are.
That is correct, that's what it says in here. So, Dr. Edwards, I know you have done an outstanding job with getting us to review all of our policies. Many of them, in my personal opinion, were rotting on the vine for years, and now we've kind of looked at them all. Could we bump BDDHZ up for some further discussion by the persons who are working with that and come back with some recommendations? Unless somebody's saying to me otherwise, I'm hearing us say, stay put. Dr. Gupta, thank you for what you just said. Are you suggesting, I understand what you were saying about First Amendment dynamics, but you are saying with caution around vulgarity and profanity? That, I guess, what makes sure I understood what you said.
And that's what, you warn them too, but there has to be a mechanism to stop it. It's tough on a live broadcast. So how do we do that, so that your IT staff is able? But those discussions you can have at the back end.
Ms. Morrison?
I do think what Dr. Sinna said is that if we are going, if there are consequences for people not following our protocol, then those consequences need to be outlined prior to them being enforced. It's not safe, it's not fair to any individual to say, well, you did this, and now this, that, that's...
That's why I'm asking that the group that reviews that particular policy would, that would come up, Dr. Edwards, and as quickly as possible. And so we will continue, for now, with emails and voice messages. Deputy Superintendent Pugh, you do an outstanding job with keeping me aware of the time, but if we can figure out how to get that back up, and if you all give me permission as the chair, we'll shut it down. I do recognize tonight that there was some discrepancy as to whose name was on the sheet. And of course, I try to make the calls the best I can, and so in due diligence to the fact that the person had articulated, they did sign it. But thank you for the guidance of where we are for right now. I try to do everything concerning the entire board's thoughts, rather than going off on my own. And I appreciate your comments tonight. And so that now moves us to... And so that now moves us to E, informational items. And we, listen, board, we have a lot of work to do before next Tuesday. Now, you all said many bold things. I'm going to need to talk to you. Dr. Carter will be talking to you. We've got to do a lot of talking. That's a two-hour meeting. The mayor and myself will be running the meeting. And we both have been encouraged by way of the city manager, et cetera, to make sure that we move that meeting along. It's strained for time, so we've got to do a lot of work prior to. So just keep that in mind. And they've got to, they've got a drop-line date because they've got another meeting we don't. And they've got a lot on their agenda, okay? So the next school board meeting will be Tuesday, April 5th. And we'll deal with public comments and the rest of the agenda as accordingly. The Lynchburg City School's spring break is April 11th through the 15th. Dr. Sena's group, April 12th meeting has been canceled since it is during the spring break time. And our next work session will be April 19th, where we may or may not have further direction concerning our budget, et cetera. And then the next finance committee is Tuesday, April 26th. There are no other further thoughts tonight. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.